Okay. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, September 17. As you know, the meeting is held in hybrid format. The Select Board is here in person. We've got members of the public here. But in addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so. We just kicked it off. There's the online link on the town website. As well as that same link offers, if you don't have access to computer, you can dial in via conference call. And then certainly click on the link to the agenda packet, which I find is super helpful if you want to follow along as to what we're reading and what we're discussing. And as always, this meeting is going to be recorded, so you can watch it later via Medfield TV or just Google "Select Board Meeting," whatever date. It'll pop up on YouTube. But I'd like to just take a moment before we kick off the meeting.
... in progress.
And I want to read an email that we received just before the meeting kicked off today from Richard DeSorga regarding some sad news. He received a call from the daughter of Sandra Muncie informing him that her mother passed away last week. Sandra was, of course, the first woman elected to the Medfield Board of Selectmen, as it was called then. She broke the glass ceiling. That was followed by Ann Thompson and now myself, Eileen Murphy, as a board member. Sandra was elected in 1977 and served until 1980. Before that, she was very involved as an elected member of the planning board. She was active during the connection of large sections of the town to the sewer treatment plant, obtaining large amounts of acreage for conservation in Noon Hill, help getting the town through the blizzard of '78, working on the beautification of the downtown, beginning the process of building the water tower off Nebo and East Mount Road, working with the federal government and obtaining all the wetlands along the Charles River for flood protection by the Army Corps of Engineers, completing the building of the then-new police station and overseeing a decrease of the tax rate from $77 per thousand down to $73.10 per thousand amongst many, many other accomplishments. Sandra brought class and a strong knowledge of the workings of town government to the town and left Medfield a better place when she left in 1980, when she was first elected. Sandra and her husband had retired down in the Cape after contributing much to the town of Medfield. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for Sandra as well as for a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you.
And if you think your taxes are high now, $77 per thousand. Back then, that's a ton. I saw her name a lot when I was on the ZBA. So I think that she, Richard doesn't cite it, but I think she was a ZBA member in town as well. Because I really became familiar with her when I served on the ZBA.
All right, so let's kick this off with appointments. And the Select Board is going to recognize the following individuals for their dedication to the town of Medfield. First up, we have Connor Corrigan, recognizing five years with the Highway Department. There we go, right back there. Come on up there. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Connor, good to see you again.
Thank you.
All right. And next up, we have Lisa Visers, School Traffic, 10 years. Is that Lisa?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you jumped in. Never mind.
Nope. Now is Lisa here?
Does not appear that Lisa is here.
What's that?
Lisa does not appear to be here. So we'll hold that and we'll give it to her.
Oh, bummer, okay. No, she was back there with the crowd. All right, so we'll set this aside. 10 years, congratulations to that. All right, next up is Stephen Hart, Dover Sherburne. I recognize that shirt back there. Track coach, requests to use the Medfield State Hospital property for Dover Sherburne High School cross-country races. So Stephen, you want to come up?
Hey, Christine, you want to do a picture with Connor and the board?
Oh, yeah, we should have done that. Yep. Can I ask you to hold one second? So we can just do a quick picture with the board. Connor, we just need to get your picture, sorry.
We don't do this with everybody that speaks. It's just...
You can stand, actually, if the board can get you to come around.
Wipe out your shoes and that looks up. Like our obstacle course back there. Normally, I'd be a little more dressed up, but...
Thank you.
There we go, Stephen.
Great. Well, first of all, thank you so much for allowing me to come in tonight. I can see from the size of your crowd here, you have probably a lot more important things to discuss. So I'm glad you can give a few minutes to consider this. So just brief history. Well, first of all, my name is Stephen Hart. I'm the head coach of the Dover Sherburne Boys' Cross Country Team, here on behalf of the Girls' Cross Country Team as well. And since 2010, we've had a racecourse that is mostly on our, partly on our campus, about six tenths of a mile, and then about two miles in the woods between our high school campus and the former Medfield State Hospital campus. And then last couple of years, people are probably familiar, the trail along the river became very eroded, and the DCR has closed that off. So we kind of lost a good portion of our racecourse because we sort of became landlocked. So we worked with the Medfield Parks and Rec last year, who are super generous to allow us to race on Medfield's home course at McCarthy Park, which is actually, which we love. I mean, we have a long history with Medfield. And now they're back into the TBL small with us. So we're racing against Medfield again. And our start lines and our courses are about a mile apart. So this year, our AD wants us to be back on the campus. And we have looked at a course that would be probably about, would be about a mile or so of our old course, maybe a mile and a quarter, that would get us up the gas line and to North Field, which we like to name things at our high school. So we tell the kids that's called Sound of Music Field, which they love. But north, I'll go with North Field. And then a loop around North Field in front of what we call the Velociraptor Cage. Do people know? I can see some people are familiar with that sign in there. Our kids love that. It would go right in front of the cage and then around the rest of the field. So it'd be about a half mile of course on that field. And then we would finish the rest on our typical trails, about another mile to get back to our campus and back to our finish line. So we would, we're here to try to get, to ask for your permission to run that half mile through that field. The part in front of the cage is fairly well-defined. It would be a straight shot across. Originally, we were thinking it would be great to mow a path to make it clear where the course goes. The field is recently mowed. And I think probably with the lack of rain, I don't think the grass is going to grow a whole lot between now and our first race, which is next Wednesday. We have another one in October, toward the end of October. Maybe the grass will grow up a bit then. But I think for now, it's a safe surface because it's fairly, the grass is fairly short. And we could just mark that with cones for the kids to know where to run across. As we ran since 2010 along the river, that trail became more and more popular with dog walkers. So we've met a lot of dog walkers along that course. And we would just have a coach there with a sign that just alerted them a race was going on. Dog walkers were always very gracious about that. I would envision something similar in, at the top of North Field, maybe in the two spots at the top, a sign alerting them that the race is happening. And then two coaches out there so that we could, one, have the kids know exactly where to go, and two, just to interact with any folks that might be walking their dogs. We do train in that Sound of Music Field quite a bit. And we've come across dog walkers and have not had an issue with them. People have been very gracious about either keeping their dogs away from the runners or just keeping them on leash if need be. So in any case, that's in a nutshell, just asking permission to be able to run that half mile. We think that it probably would be about 10 minutes of time in each race. So the boys' race, the kids would probably get, the first runner probably get to that field around 4:15. And then from that time until the last runner exits the field, probably totaled about 10 minutes. The runners are pretty stretched out, so it's not a lot of people there at once. Same thing would happen in the girls' race. First girl would probably get there around 5 o'clock. And then it'd be about 10 minutes before the last girl gets to that field. And then we'd be finished.
I think it's an excellent thing for Medfield to share its field with you. So I have no issues with that at all. I just share with you that I've been spending a lot of my life trying to figure out how to wear sneakers to work. But I see that I set my sights too low. I should have looked for a job where I can wear sneakers, shorts, and a t-shirt to work.
Absolutely. You can come over to practice if you want. We just finished, about 3:45.
As a father whose boys all ran cross-country, I'm delighted to be able to say, yeah, go ahead and do that. The only, on the email that you sent, my sense was that you guys know exactly what you need to do to make sure dog walkers are under control. So when I first saw the email, I was like, gosh, I'm going to get to talk to the Norfolk Hunt Club, figure out what they do to make sure the dogs don't mess with the horses. But if you've got that part down, you don't need anything from us. I'm happy that we can help you out.
Absolutely. When I read it, I have no issue with it whatsoever. Hopefully, you get a bigger crowd and people cheer the guys and the girls along as they're out there walking their dogs and just walking in general up there. Because you just get a lot of people just want to get up there and get some exercise. So I'm fine with it. So take a motion.
I move that we approve Dover Sherburne High School's request to use the state hospital grounds and particularly the North Field for their cross-country races in September and October. And if it came down to it longer than that, I suppose, but...
Yep, September... Thought I wrote it down, September 25th and October 23rd.
September 25th, October 23rd.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good luck with your season.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks. All right. Next up, we have Deputy Police Chief Barry McGrath to request the appointment of Joseph Tassone as a new full-time police officer with the Medfield Police Department effective September 29th. And I hope I pronounced his last name correctly.
Tassone.
Tassone, okay.
Joseph Tassone. Town administrative members of the board come to you tonight respectfully requesting the appointment to full-time police officer position for Joseph Tassone. Joseph is currently employed with the Hanover Police Department. Lives in Abington, Mass. And he has a degree, bachelor's degree in criminology. We'd ask for this appointment to be effective the 29th.
Any questions?
No questions. Congratulations.
No questions.
No, I saw you early. I'm thrilled. I keep bringing in the staff. We love it. We've got a great department. I see many of the guys back there right now. So I'm thrilled to be adding another member. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I move that we appoint Joseph Tassone as a full-time police officer with the Medfield Police Department effective September 29th.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, thank you. No, I'd love that.
No. We require that because we make sure that the policeman have a good, firm handshake.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Sneak up here and get a photo op with you.
Precisely why would I wore tonight? I knew there was going to be a couple opportunities.
There's one way we can get that to be less...
Then you go eat one more. One more.
One more. Oops, there we go.
All right. And next up, we have Penny Connor, Chair of the Medfield Energy Committee, to request Select Board to endorse the zero emissions vehicle first policy. All right, and there's Penny. I see her on board.
Good evening and Monday. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on the energy, zero first energy policy. If you'll allow me, I will share my screen and we can look at the updated language that we have added to the Medfield Energy Committee, took your feedback very seriously. Gus, we thank you for taking the time to make detailed notes. So I would like to approach this in a couple of ways. One is that I will show you how we have proposed to add language into the zero energy, zero electric vehicle first policy. And then also respond to the questions that you've had so that we can make sure we've covered everything. So we thought the easiest way to manage this would be to add to the Town of Medfield Zero Emissions Vehicle First Policy, which is using a framework that the state provided and other towns have used. Just putting in Town of Medfield, Medfield School District, adding in a note, adding in a comment that's here in red. And this was reviewed and approved by the Medfield Energy Committee. The Town of Medfield has developed a long-range vehicle plan to support reducing carbon emissions associated with town vehicles. This vehicle plan includes additional guidance regarding type criteria to evaluate as vehicles come up for replacement. This guidance and the long-range vehicle plan complement the electric first procurement policy outlined below. Additionally, this vehicle plan, as well as the electric first procurement policy, will be reviewed annually by the Medfield Energy Committee, MAP, to ensure that the policy and criteria remain current. So our thought was that we would put this language into the policy, make it clean, and then the criteria is, the criteria would be added into our long-range vehicle plan, which we would review annually. So let me continue with some questions that Gus raised. All very good questions. So he asked a question about the, let me pull it up here on my, if I can reference what I'm, my notes here. Apologize. Okay, here we go. So first question, there is, it highlights in Part E. So actually, I can show that to you. Pull that off at the same time? Clearly not. But we have in Part E that there is an 8,500 pounds. So if this particular policy applies to vehicles that are 8,500 pounds and above, that definition is there because the Department of Energy Resources for the state identified that a heavy-duty vehicle is 8,500 pounds and above. So all it's saying is that if you're a heavy-duty vehicle, you're exempt from this policy. The item H says the fuel-efficient seat vehicle policy requires designated green communities to, again, about the 8,500 pounds. Gus had asked, is it relevant? It's just simply for a delineation between what's heavy-duty and not heavy-duty. So the 8,500 is just the DOER's definition of that. Sorry. My cat also wants to be part of the meeting. The, out of H, Gus asked, a hybrid electric vehicle, would this vehicle need a charging station? It does not. A hybrid electric vehicle actually uses a combustion engine. It's, it grabs a little bit of electric energy when it uses braking. So when you're idling, you may be using just that little bit stored. But it has emissions and it does not plug in. So it doesn't go any, any significant miles or hardly any miles. I drove a hybrid for years without, because it just has very little charge. But it does grab a little bit and saves, hence has higher gasoline mileage because it's using that little bit of battery, a little bit of energy created from braking. Item O, zero emissions vehicle. The question was, why is an EV on this list? Hybrid electric vehicles have emissions by the very, because they have a combustion engine. So they're not considered a zero-energy vehicle because they don't have any mileage, they can run zero energy. Whereas a plug-in electric hybrid, it can actually go 30, 40 miles. And for many consumers, that may be all they need to travel on the next. That's why that can be zero emissions and actually build trucks. But hybrid electric's not. But they are more fuel-efficient, which is why they are above, just in the list of categories, above just pure combustion.
And Penny, if I, if I can jump in for a minute on that one. The reason I was asking the questions about the hybrids is because I didn't know whether all of the vehicles the town would buy will always be so local and so low mileage that you'll always be able to charge them. So I'm thinking that there may be some, some uses for, that we have for vehicles that involve longer distance driving, where the cruising range of an all-electric vehicle would be limited. So from a policy standpoint, that's actually why I was pushing on the hybrids.
Okay. So what you would want there, Gus, is the plug-in hybrid. So a plug-in hybrid has a battery and it has a combustion engine. The battery, you plug in and you can go 40 miles. The combustion engine will take you another 400 miles. And this is a really good option where you might have, normally in the town, very short distances, but this vehicle also needs to be used because maybe you need to attend meetings that are statewide or maybe in Western Mass, and you have to travel a long way. Or maybe you need to go to a conference. And then you could do the internal combustion and you can, you can put gasoline fuel in it. So that actually is, is the ideal vehicle. But it's, but that's the plug-in hybrid. The hybrid, the hybrid electric vehicles really just...
Okay.
... only the gas. They don't have a, you don't have a plug-in on the end. They grab, as you're doing friction things, they grab and store the energy from it. And it allows you to get increased mileage associated with your use of the vehicle, as far as miles per gallon.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect. So environmental impact, really savvy question. So this is a good one. A lot of people are talking about the fact that today we don't have all the solutions in place to recycle these batteries or to dispose of them in a way that is environmentally ideal. But there's a lot of work going on in this space that's, that's developing very rapidly. The committee doesn't have a way, we don't have a defined way to evaluate that. But what we wanted to commit to is we would review that, we'd review annually. We'll look and see if there's new developments in this space that would cause us to pause one way or the other to say, you know what? They're not making progress on, on how they're disposing and taking care of these batteries. And maybe we need to, you know, consider that or build some way to add it in. Or no, they're continuing to make progress and we feel like, you know, they're, they will, they'll have good results there. The assumption that you would have is that in 10 years, hopefully, this is not such a significant problem because a lot of energy and mind shares being spent to work on this.
Penny, can I ask, can I ask the back half of that statement? It also had the assessment of financial impacts. And I'm just curious, does the committee have a framework? Like, I don't know what that means just by itself. You know where I'm coming from. I'm coming from, the policy is a bit indirect about anything having to do with evaluating the cost of buying these vehicles. So I'm looking for things that have some, some teeth in it. What I'm really trying to do is make sure that department heads don't read the policy, see nothing in it on cost. And even though there are other things that, you know, the supplemental materials lay out something around cost, I think, it would be easy for department heads just to say, oh, we just have to buy these vehicles. And, you know, cost isn't here in the policy, so cost can't be in my consideration, which I think would not be good for the town. So that's where I'm coming from on my questions here.
Right. And I think those are very good ones. We will certainly, we plan to meet with the department heads to remind them that there is, we do have a plan for the replacement, a long-range plan. Obviously, they would need to make those decisions as the vehicles come up and reassess based on cost and the need and purpose of the vehicle. The purpose may have changed. But those considerations, we don't have a way to, there's no defined way for us to... Essentially, what you're asking for is the cost of carbon here of the...
I'm asking, I'm asking about the purchase cost. For sure. I'm not worried about cost of carbon. I'm worried about...
The environment. But the purchase cost should definitely be considered and for the, and also the use of the vehicle. So for example, if this is a vehicle that's going to be used during storm response to assist customers, and we might have a situation where the chargers are not available, that needs to be considered when we're selecting the vehicle. It may not be appropriate to have an all-electric vehicle if that's a vehicle that's going to be needed during storm response and you might not have a backup battery to hit a charge.
Is that kind of, I'll call it sophisticated thinking about the decision, are those factors in the guidance?
We will be writing the, the guidance will have cost effectiveness, resiliency, the purpose of the vehicle. All of that needs to be considered. But we haven't written those down yet. But we will, add them into the vehicle. And we can bring them to the Select Board if you would like.
I personally would like, yeah.
I'm personally impassioned with the resiliency of the vehicle, too.
I, I personally would like it because what, basically what's happened is the policy is generic, general enough and somewhat amorphous around those kinds of specifics that that immediately caused, I, I don't care that it's like that because you've talked about the guidance that's there, but it's like, well, but who's deciding on that guidance? Because that's actually the part that I care about. And by the way, I'm not doing this to put up obstacles, I actually think there's a good chance in the short run, with the kinds of incentives that are there, it's entirely possible that the most economical vehicles for us to buy are going to be these kinds of vehicles. It, it may not be forever, but in the, right now, in the short run, foreseeable future, I can see it being almost a better decision to make, as long as, as long as the functional operational needs of the vehicle can be met.
Yes, it needs to meet the functional and operational needs of the requirements you write. EVs are coming, are very attractive price right now, I, and, but I will put in there something about resilience, because if you have an all-electric fleet and then you have a storm and you have no power, even though you've got backup generators, it's not, you still don't have any way to charge them up.
Thanks.
So that's a problem. Then the applicability, that's the heavy duties. We talked about, oh, you asked? Well, we talked about alternative, and so I think we've covered all of that. Purchase price, we'll have that. MEI, I apologize, I was trying to look it up fast, Massachusetts Energy Index or something like that, but it's, it's a, it's a statewide tool that we put our data in. And, all right, and all vehicles, all vehicles, but, I'm sorry, I missed this, all vehicles, if they are specialty vehicles, and you asked about this, Gus, and I'm not seeing it in my little notes here, but you had asked about specialty vehicles, if it is a vehicle that is cleaning the sidewalk, that is a specialty vehicle and it does not apply to that type of vehicle. So I, I hope I've covered everything. I'll pause and see if there's other questions you have for me.
All right, you've actually answered all my, is this?
The only thing I had on, the new thing added was the personal interest in having that guidance come before so we can see it, because for me, that's where, I think that's where the concrete components here, I think that's the thing I'm going to be most interested in, just to make sure we've got a balance.
Okay, we will address that in our Medfield Energy Committee to provide that guidance along with that facility's plan.
Thank you.
Vehicle plan.
Now, I'm good. I reviewed it, and the one thing I wanted to make sure it didn't change is the fleet policy is electric first, meaning that electric vehicles shall be prioritized, not must be, as we talked about in our last session. So that, that leaves some wiggle room if we're all, if a department head comes forward and has some reasons that they can explain, they're not going to be forced to do something that may not be appropriate for their group, so I'm good.
You already answered all my questions, I'm good.
All right. So are we?
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Okay. I move, I'm going to get through the paperwork here, I move that we endorse the zero emissions vehicle first policy submitted by Penny and the Energy Committee.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Maria De La Fonte, Director of Land Use and Planning, to discuss downtown pedestrian safety improvements and wayfinding. Good evening, Maria.
Good evening, and thank you for having me.
Do you want to do?
I'm going to do wayfinding first. Good evening, everyone, it's great to be back here. I come with two exciting projects for, for your feedback, and just to update residents in general, the first one is going to be our wayfinding project. So for history of the project, we had first gone, faced one of this initiative funded by the Mass Downtown Improvement Program through the One Stop Rent Portal back in 2022. The state assigned Faberman Design to Medfield to provide an initial concept design and branding for key areas of town, which was the downtown. So they created different types of signs, you know, pointing towards parking, pointing towards landmarks, just something to give the town a sense of place and to make it more pedestrian-friendly. Then we successfully requested $150,000 earmark through the local delegation for implementation work. The scope now includes additional design and implementation funding, and the project is set to be completed by July of 2025. The planning board has reviewed, but respectfully, the first of project to the select board, and we are looking at a scope of $35,000 for development and additional design work, and $115,000 for the materials and the installation of the signs, which you will see in later So this is the scope as it was proposed by the earmark. We will work with a vendor to design and implement wayfinding signage in the downtown, and that will improve the downtown experience for visitors and will improve access and visibility of secondary locations. I can let you read through the slides a little bit, but basically, we're looking to slow down traffic, we're looking to make crosswalks more visible to slow down traffic, we have to narrow down traffic lanes, and we're going to be doing that as well, not just paint, but putting some flex posts, so there's actually a.
Maria, I think you're doing the pedestrian presentation and not the wayfinding.
Oh my gosh, you're right. Sorry, we did this for so many hours today. Actually, no, no, you're in the correct one, but that will tie into our wayfinding.
They tie very well together, but yes.
There you go, sorry, I was like, yeah, let's, let's hit the ground running, folks. So, sorry, yes, so sense of place in the downtown, this will street, uh, street games and signage improvements to the town hall, and this will be, center point for the downtown will be the anchor. This will also welcome visitors to Medfield and help them find our key landmarks. It'll also tie into the history of Medfield to, you know, even if you're new to town, you get a sense for what Medfield is about. And it'll help guide vehicular traffic to our parking locations, which I know can be limited, and parking can be difficult in peak hours, so it'll be at least easier to find, and it'll provide some visibility to the downtown businesses as well, that might be a little more tucked away and a little harder to find. So here are some of the designs that were proposed by Faberman Design. They went through a couple alternatives using different landmarks. So we have a Peak House, we had the town hall, we have some natural resources, and I think at the end, the wayfinding committee ended up settling for the town hall. So we can just scroll through these, these are just some of the proposed designs. We have parking, landmarks, more landmarks, and, you know, directions, banners, and some of the proposed locations that will be distributed around the town. And we can still look into what, if these locations will make sense, or if we want to add or change anything. A lot of this will also depend on what the downtown businesses feel like, how we could support them better. So for questions and next steps, and I will have more pictures coming, but my initial question is if you wanted to proceed with this initial conceptual designs, we did receive some feedback that the designs didn't seem to fit Medfield, what Medfield is about. There is also a budget for further design work, we're looking at $35,000 we could spend on a different consultant, or even to elaborate or redraw what we currently have. There are other qualified consultants that have been recommended through the Planning List Service and just reaching out through networks, and that's Silbert, StanTech, Rol Baresi, Omloop, and Beta. And we do have authorization to proceed with a consultant for design services. So before you answer that, I want to show you some other proposed portfolios I have received. This is Rol Baresi, he was recommended to me by three different parties. He is the person who did the Newport Designs, so Historic Newport, there is a lot of, you know, a sense of place in Newport is very strong. He also, this, this firm, which is led by Rol Baresi, has also done Salem Downtown and Historic Salem. So the Salem Designs, which are like the bottom ones, are a little more, I guess, old-fashioned, which I think suits Salem very well. So these are two major cities under their portfolio, and I think they look very organic. Next one. The other one I really liked is Omloop Design. This, it's a little more urban, it's what they have in their portfolio, but just to give you a sense, they did downtown Boston, which is again a major client, and talk about wayfinding, there's so much to find, go, and do in Boston. And they have also done some conservation trails in trying to bring to attention the natural resources of different regions. So they play very well with color schemes, again, they seem to have a very good sense, even like the photos they have used, everything seems to flow together very nicely. And I have looked through the other consultants' portfolios, one of them has done very urban work, like Las Vegas and LA, and I think that was a little too urban, so I didn't want to include it in this presentation, I don't think it would be necessarily translate for what we're trying to accomplish. And all the others just seem, you know, Beta is a traffic engineer, and they do have engineers on staff, but I think I personally prefer something a little more colorful and organic, and these two companies seem to have a history of designing for places with history, which I think is something that Medfield likes to tap into. So those are my preferred two, there are so many firms out there, this is just to give you a general sense, I'm happy to send you pages and portfolios if you want to think about it, but if you're also happy with the design that we got from Faberman, that is also okay. I just threw a lot of you, mixed in some traffic improvements in there, so.
Any comments?
So I, I was part of the committee that met with Flaberman, was it, who did, came up, did the wayfaring originally, and, and as I look at the final things that that group came up with, I'm sort of less than enthusiastic. And when I met with Chris, yes, her today, she even suggested using the one that the master planning committee had come up with, that, that I think is kind of nice, actually, what I've got here on the back of my computer. So, and I guess the other thing that I would throw out, Maria, was that I went to a Mass, MAPC webinar on branding, and they focused on Amesbury and some other town up on the North Shore, and, and they, they were basically towns that were sort of looking to update their, their seals, their town seals, and replace the town seal with a logo. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to maybe think in those terms as well to, instead of having the town seal on the side of the DPW trucks, maybe having a, a logo that is more appropriate, more modern. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
My, my head went in the same direction Pete did about the webinar that we had watched on, on the town, towns that were looking for branding, and just one subtle point, they weren't getting rid of their legal seal, they were choosing to not use the seal as their brand. So just in terms of where we go with it, it's not really changing the seal, it's just like you're changing what you show to people to create an impression when they come through town. In going through those, I have a couple, I had a couple of questions that popped up. First off, in your view, are these wayfaring signs primarily for pedestrians to use as they're walking, or are they for drivers to use as they're driving?
I think it depends on the type of sign, the parking signs will obviously be, you know, as you're driving by, they have to be big, they have to be visible, those who will point you towards businesses, those are mostly, I think, meant for cars, but for pedestrians, having things like on the street level that have more, a little more text, a little more guidance, so we can do a mix of both.
Okay, so that's my main point, because when you showed us some samples, it's like, gosh, if you're driving, it's the big stuff.
Oh, no, there's no way you can.
Okay. The other thing is, I look at these, the question for me seemed, I think, is, are we looking to have a photograph, you know, some, some depiction of something in town? When you said that people said, well, these signs, they don't really, they're not really what we're all about, my question was, hey, what did they say we were all about? Because if it's not this, then what is it? But more generally, when I look here, it's like, well, maybe the first question is, are we looking for a stylized artistic sign, or are we looking for a picture? And you almost sort of have to, it would make it simpler if you could figure that piece out first, rather than say, let's look at some picture, you know, let's look at some artistic portrayals, and let's look at some photographs, which ones do you like the best? I don't even, it's a little hard to, for me to, I don't know that I would have an opinion. I wouldn't know how to answer on that, so that, that would be another thought that I have on that. I don't see us as, as much as I understand the planning board deferred to our, our superior aesthetic judgment. I don't know that we would, I, I would actually be more interested in hearing the views of the businesses in town, what they would like to see, maybe the people who live closer to the center of town, that they're going to have to live with whatever happens here. So I don't think I'll have a, you know, I'm happy to have this kind of helpful discussion about just the way my head's thinking about it. I don't think I would have a strong view in terms of, no, this is the, these are the colors, and this is the shape, I don't think, I don't know that, personally, I don't think I'd want to drive that discussion.
Right. I think that's part of the design process, if we were to engage a new consultant or the same one and try, you know, try again, whatever the board decides to do, that is part of the process, they will ask, and I think in, in the beginning stages, they will give you both artistic kind of signs, like minimalist, like you see here, and photography. The trend that I've been seeing is that most wayfinding, I think, tends to lead towards minimalist styles that are easily adaptable. The thing with the picture is that there's less things you can do with this, while text can be a little more flexible, you can change, minimize, you know, play with the colors.
Right.
But there is advantages and disadvantages to both, but they will go through that process with you, and I would expect that as we go through this process, we do have a couple public meetings, one for residents of the area, we can invite like a body within 300, you know, foot radius of the downtown, or whatever's the appropriate distance, and another one for businesses, because they will both be impacted, and I think they both deserve to have their own platform to speak, and, you know, we can help facilitate that through the board and the public platform it provides, but I would expect at least one for the residents and at least one for the businesses, with more as needed.
And one of those could be picked photographs and one could be?
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
For the initial one, I was reading through the Faberman report, and summarize Medfield in three words, or what are the, what sentences, you know, make you think of town? So based on that is how they.
Motorcycle, what talks about?
So based on that is how they came up with the design. So there was, you know, three words or more, and, and it is kind of difficult to put an image to a feeling.
Yeah.
But that's why we'll have people weighing in, and I think workshops, and people voting on and sending out surveys, I know there were surveys for the last one, I think it will be very helpful to just get a feel for what the community actually wants to see. Still have to live with it, like you said.
Can I ask a member of the audience a question?
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
What do you think, Jean?
I was on the Faberman team, so.
Can you, Mike, I hate to do that to you, but I can barely hear you, I know someone at home's not going to hear you.
I saw you fall asleep back there, I figured.
I think Maria's on the right track.
Okay.
I support her.
Okay.
Yeah, I hate to. Thank you, Mike.
We're done.
Well, at least it's back there. So I am, I have the same feelings of getting feedback from the business, getting feedback from the folks that live in the RU, because they're the ones that walk up here a lot. I do, I love the idea of having the signs to direct people to where we have parking, because our parking is in like little nooks and crannies around town, and if you're not from Medfield, you're not going to find it right away. And we have a lot of new restaurants, so we certainly want to make sure that our restaurants have the ability to have their, their potential customers find places to park. The design, I, I remember taking the survey, and I can tell you, I know I didn't vote for the town hall, because we're not a brick town, I always thought that was weird, that came out top, but I, I know that the results showed that that's what everyone selected. So the idea of showing something a little more warm and a little more inviting, to me, even though I know that the town hall's historic and all that, it's just as, considering we have the Charles River, we have, you know, historic things like the Grissmill and Peak House and Dwight Derby, it's like, could we be doing something that, that? It's like, could we be doing something that, that really does tie into the old New England feel and touch? Um, so yeah, it's, this isn't an easy one. Um, it's, and, and, you know, I remember talking with Sarah when I think it first got brought up with Sarah. Um, it's, it's, this is not easy, but it is something I think would be beneficial. And something like, if we could do something like you have in the slide right now, where you have images, where people, you know, can see where the Dwight Derby House is, where the Grissmill is, where, you know, the state hospital is, even though it's not downtown, it's still showing people that it's, it, especially where Belfort will be. Um, it's just nice to show people where they can be going around our town.
Definitely. I think there's a lot of very beautiful things in Medfield that if you're not from around here, you might miss. And that's a shame. So I would, we'd like to try to advertise that. And I know that this grant is only for the downtown, um, but I would really hope to expand on this in future years and future maybe funding rounds. I would love to tie our industrial district, as we discussed. I would love to tie our trails, uh, potentially, and other historic resources and make an interconnected, you know, town. But I think that downtown is, is where we start.
Sure.
Um, and I think it's a really great idea to, now that we're gonna have a designer on staff, it would be great to have them make sure that whatever they do will go with the future logo, or maybe they can give us some pointers. Um, or maybe they could, I don't know if it would be in the scope to design a logo right then and there to go on those, um, signs, but it's something we can definitely bring up and see where it takes us. But it's, it's a great opportunity to kind of get ahead of that.
So what do you need from us tonight? What's the next steps here?
Um, could you go two slides back? Um, conceptual designs. I would like to know if you are okay with proceeding with Faberman, which is what we had before, or if you would like me to go ahead and reach out to other firms and get you some proposed scopes and, you know, price quotations, and we can go from there. And any other considerations, you know, within the scope of the earmark, of course, then we can have.
Okay. Pete, you're inkling either way?
So I've got no expertise in picking design firms, so I'd leave that up to your expertise. Maria, I would add one thing on to, uh, what we've been talking about, which is that there's been a, a long time lack of a sign indicating the Park Street businesses on 109. We need something there at that corner, uh, of, of Park Street and, and 109, indicating that there's a business district down there and, and trying to funnel the, the traffic down to those businesses.
So we had a, we had a very promising conversation with Needham Bank in the past. They have not been interested in hosting a sign on their property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had a very positive conversation with them and they're very open to it. I believe some of their clients might be on Park Street now, so they're very interested in.
Oh, good.
Uh, in directing people that way. Excuse me. So we'll plan on, uh, coordinating that with this effort as well.
Okay.
So we've been hedging on our comments, and I think you were really, I think that is the question you really are coming in with. Should we go with Faberman or do you want, do you want to have me look at another one or two design firms or whatever? This conversation here and the somewhat tepid comment that you have there is a sub-bullet about people's reaction to what you have with Faberman. I think it would make sense to go and look at at least another design firm. Ideally, one whose style is different, I would think, you know. Like there was one there you put up, I don't know if it was Bert, whether it was that Raul Barresi. Might have been, there was either that one or the second one. Like that's, those are kind of, those are simpler in terms of the graphic side of it.
Yes.
But they, they do have sort of a classic look.
Yes.
And we're not a, and we're not Salem where everybody's coming around here on a tourist. You know, it's not a Freedom Trail, it's just, it's a town. Uh, so I'm not necessarily saying that's the right one, but what I think I hear in this conversation is a lack of real enthusiastic commitment to going with what you have. So I think you probably want to look at another one.
Yes. And I can go with, um, you know, go to both firms and say, I have enough to exceed scope of thirty-five thousand. What can you do with it within this scope of the earmark? And we can see what they come back with. This is, uh, as it is a planning, um, service, it is exempt from procurement. So as long as we also do our due diligence and, and ask and shop around, that is okay. So we can, you know, proceed without an RFP, just interactions with, uh, consultants. And this is an example too of like, those are vehicle oriented signs.
Right, yeah.
So.
Except for that one, the lower right.
Yes. Yes. That's, that's a traffic issue if you were trying to read it.
All right, so do you want to make a motion to?
But, I, I guess I move that we approve the idea of using, pursuing another design firm to get some more ideas on this.
Right.
And, uh, I guess within the thirty-five thousand dollars that you have earmarked for.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Excellent.
Onto the next one that was already started.
All right, so now on the pedestrian safety.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so downtown pedestrian improvements. This is another, uh, amount of funding that we have to also improve our downtown. Again, thinking about walkability and the experience of people who want to look at the downtown in a holistic way and truly get to explore, you know, everything we have to offer in a safe way, and also considering the, uh, schools we have nearby, so. So this was funded by Mass DOT Safe Streets and Spaces Grant. This built on our 2020 master plan and our 2021 rapid recovery plan. This will implement, uh, painted and flex post curb extensions to slow vehicle traffic and turning speeds along Main Street, which is Route 109, and between Park Street and South Street and North Street, between Ferry and Main Street. There will be maps, I know this sounds like a lot, but the maps are helpful, as well as to increase visibility for crossing pedestrians. The project will also implement a new crosswalk to the Montrose School at Ferry Street, again, trying to make sure that the kids are safe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they like to run and they like to run at Starbucks too, so. So we'll also be implementing some accessible ramps and putting in new RRFBs, which is like the rapid flashing lights to safely connect pedestrians to the school's entrance. This project will include pavement markings, eradication and installations. We'll be doing away with some crosswalks and putting them in places that make a little more sense. We'll also have concrete ADA ramp installations, uh, at select locations. And we're going to have solar powered rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which are the ones that you press the buttons and you can cross. So this is the, the project location and I have some zoomed in maps. Um, you can do the next one. So for conceptual designs, we have tool design provided at technical assistance. Conceptual for grant application, they were actually doing those as part of, uh, different grants, so they was provided for free, which is great. The focus of the conceptual drawings is pedestrian safety and traffic calming. So the first one is, uh, Main Street, Park Street, Uppin Road and, um, Miller Street. So some key businesses here on the, the bottom left, you have, um, Needham Bank, Park Street Books. It's like right in the, like down in the middle. And the building on the bottom right is going to be the United Church of Christ, just to give you a perspective on where the locations will be. The parts in orange are where we're going to be narrowing the traffic lanes. And the little dots that you may or may not be able to see from here are the locations of the, um, flex posts, which they are, we will take down in the winter. So there will not be an issue for plowing. Um, you can, there's this crazy new thing, which you put like a sticky pad in and then you put in the sticky flex post in the spring and then you just remove it. So there's no need for really any major engineering work. And it's super easy to replace and they're so, they're so cheap. So if anything were to happen to them, they're, they're easy to like swap out. Next one. The next conceptual I have is for North Street, Ferry Street and James Ave. So some key businesses here, um, on the bottom left, that's the Beth Israel Plaza where the kindergarten is at. Um, on the top, that's Montrose. And there's also the Salon One and Twenty-One North towards the right.
Oh, God.
Actually, if you could go back one, Frank, forgot to mention. Uh, in front of Park Street, which is the middle bottom one, we're thinking of putting in another crosswalk in there, because a lot of kids, it's just, there's too many, too much distance to actually cross the road and people sometimes just risk it. So it would be great if we could provide a more direct connection to Park Street. So that is also, um, something we would like to amend in the final design. And two more. Thank you.
One other one?
Yes.
So can you go back to the, the previous, just so people see what you just did there? So I think what's key, what you're showing on this one is today, there's that angular crosswalk, which is so dangerous. And you're removing that. So now it's a straight shot across from, right across, uh, North Street.
By the.
By the salon and by the church.
Yes, it would be like an L instead of that diagonal one, which is a little too long.
It's dangerous. There's, there's a blind spot there, so I think that's, that's important to pick up. That's what you're just, what you're removing and what you're adding in there.
Yes.
Are those pink things gonna be like a curve?
No, they're gonna be little sticks.
Little sticks, okay.
And the painted part is literally just paint, so that it looks to people like there's something there, but it's flat.
Right, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Next one?
Yes, thank you. So this one is for North Street, Main Street, Pleasant and James. So from like the top row, I have Montrose on the top left, then the Salon One. Then you cross the street through that, um, new crosswalk and you get into Twenty-One North. Then Starbucks is that like parking lot that you see with a bunch of cars. Um, and then you have the Public Library on my right. And then on the bottom, you also have, um, Juice on Main. It's like bottom right. So those would be the changes. Again, we're removing another diagonal crosswalk that goes, um, to Twenty-One North. That is just, I believe, the same one, just shifted. Um, and then for the last conceptual design, I have Main Street, South Street and James Ave. On the top row, I have Avenue, which is the first short crosswalk. Um, and then on the, uh, bottom left, I have Brothers. So again, I think we'll require some input here from, from businesses as well to make sure that they are aware and, you know, collaborating with us on this process.
Mm-hmm.
But this will really help reduce the traffic speeds that make sometimes walking, especially in like rush hour and on.
Well, it'll prevent people from taking right on when, right on red when there isn't a right on red.
Correct. Um, next slide. So project budget, I know that is incredibly hard to read, but it's around a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Next one. So our next steps, we wish to engage Beta Group for final engineering design. The awarded design contract for the final should not exceed ten thousand dollars. We want to engage pedestrian and the traffic safety committee for a review. And we would also like to have a meeting, uh, with the residents and one with the downtown businesses to make sure that their feedbacks are being heard and taken into consideration for this project. And we would like to review the possibility of one additional crosswalk across Route 109 at Park Street Books. As I previously mentioned, the initial work is to begin in October, November, twenty twenty-four. And we're hoping for a completion, uh, in twenty twenty-five.
Great.
I think that's the last slide?
Is that?
I'm sure if you have any questions or feedback on it.
Uh, I don't have any questions, Maria, but I think it's an excellent idea. All these ideas that you, you're putting forward here, I think, make a lot of sense. That, I think you see this in all other towns around us where people are narrowing the travel lanes, the, the actual driving areas for people and, and trying to slow the traffic that way. So I think this makes an absolute sense to go forward this way and create more of a pedestrian friendly downtown. So thank you for putting it together.
I have two unqualified observations, uh, and, and I, I don't think it's gonna be an issue because once this is really designed, I think some of this goes away. On the, on the crosswalks that come off the curve of, you know, in other words, they're not, they're not crossing the, the absolute shortest distance, the width of the, of the, the street, because they're farther out at the corner, so they're kind of extra long and they actually kind of come off the curve at an angle. I, I was paying attention this time, because Christine had shown me these before. Yeah, that's a, that's a good one, like if you look right down at South Street. That's an awfully long crosswalk from cur, from sidewalk to sidewalk. Now, if it's where the paint is, then it's not such a long crosswalk and it's almost a perpendicular crosswalk to the line of paint. But my unqualified opinion is that crosswalks generally work better when they're, like the one at James Avenue, where it's coming off perpendicular from both sidewalks. So you don't have this angle as people approaching. So that's just an observation. The other observation I have on this too is that, uh, as I look at these, I begin to think, so where is the stop line for the car that stopped at the red light? Because some of these, again, like take the South, South, uh, Street. If that's where the sidewalk is, the stop line is gonna be backed off of the side of, of that, which is gonna have cars stopping pretty far back from the corner, which, which is okay. It's just thinking that through. Yeah. And then the only other point, uh, I, I agree with Pete about the narrowing being a, a good thing. That, that will slow people down. Given the volume of traffic, I have some apprehension. But right now, we have problems with people who are doing some pretty crazy things because they're frustrated with the traffic with the way it is. I, I, just the other day, I was coming into the town hall and I saw a, a guy in a convertible Mercedes pull out when I was waiting to make, make the, going down North Street to approach the center of town. Just got tired of doing that and pulled out, uh, in another one. It was like in five, I was only driving a mile and a half and I saw two people go into oncoming lanes with long stand backs. So I, I'm apprehensive about narrowing it down, which will increase the pressure. Now, they won't have any place to go, so maybe that's the short answer. But that's the only thing that I don't, when that plays out, like, it sounds like Mo's got some answers.
So Gus, I think right now, these are all conceptual designs. Talking with Beta, they're gonna help us through that and try, try to find the optimum way to put these crosswalks in. But if you look where the, the line painting comes in.
Yeah.
People were able to get off the curb, get into the sight distance to be able to cross in the shortest distance, even though it's a long distance from, um, sidewalk to sidewalk. It'll still be shorter because of the line painting and the.
That, yeah, I, I recognize that. That's my main point, is it just seems generally.
With, with Beta, I think we're gonna be able to, to try to look into those. I, I mean, those are good points, um, you know, and try to put those in optimal positions where you don't have those angled crosswalks.
Yeah.
So Mo, is it gonna be possible, when I look at the South Street intersection and you compare it to James Ave, where we have the box painted, so people know not to block it? Can we, I mean, that's one of the worst intersections with people blocking. They, they, it gets crazy, people will cut out.
I mean, you can put those everywhere and it's, it's, a lot of people will adhere to those and a lot of people won't. And it's, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a tool that, that they use, but it's a line painting. It's not a barricade or anything else.
No, and I get that, but sometimes you see the visual, like, I think people do respect it at James Ave.
Yeah.
Because they see it, right?
I've seen it more and more, especially, you know, I used to go, I always go around Brook Street and come around and take a right instead of trying to get into a left before. But now I can go back and come in from the left-hand side, so people are letting you in from now on.
And I mean, I know there's a bigger discussion we've had with the chief that just the line, the, the, the way the lights are set along 109 is not something that we can control. It's controlled by the state. It's over a hundred thousand dollars to redo that, that test.
It's an engineered type, you know, system.
We haven't done it in a long time.
But they are, they are owned and maintained by the town.
They're owned and maintained, but we don't control the, um, the actual, uh, like if we want to change the way the lights are set and delays and all that, from what I heard two weeks ago, we.
It's, it's because of when the state did the project.
Right.
They're the ones that, that had that engineered.
Right. That it was done, what, over ten years ago, which is like, where, where so much has changed around here.
PM before Mo.
Before Mo. Hey, before me too, I get that. [laughing] All right, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mo.
All right, so we're good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so next steps on this. Have you moved forward with conceptual design?
Um, yeah, uh, we're looking for an authorization to proceed with Beta for the final design.
All right, we're good with that? Yes, Pete?
So moved.
Okay. So he's gonna, do, I just wanted to make sure you have any more questions.
Second.
We can do reverse, it works for me. All those in favor?
Aye. Is there, yeah, the only thing I would have asked is, is there a dollar amount that we're authorizing or is it?
Uh, at this point, we anticipate ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, she had that in the presentation. Okay, so we're good?
Okay, we're good.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to see how these two will tie together and hopefully we can have a thriving downtown by the end of twenty-five. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to the next part of our agenda, discussion items. Uh, so West Street and Route 27 discussion. We've got three areas here. Discuss next steps in timeline with Beta Engineering. Vote to sign contract with Beta Engineering for West and 27 Design. And vote to authorize an additional thirty thousand from Chapter Ninety for Design, which will bring the total to three hundred and thirty thousand. So, Ken, welcome back.
Great, great to be back. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, just for the record, Ken Ho with Beta Group, we're the designer. We're the designer for the intersection of 27 and West Street. So Madam Chair, if I may, as a follow-up to our last meeting, I think someone had asked, I think one of the board members had asked, what's our next steps? So what we have done is we have put together a summary of the key component of the task that needs to be completed for the project, which I'm waiting for Frank to bring it up on TV. While we're waiting for Frank, so there are a lot of very important tasks. So in the interest of time, I'm just going to summarize and really highlight, you know, the really key components. So I think what I've done is I've identified so far what we have done. If you recall, I think before we even get to the 25% design, there's the ICE process, which is intersection control evaluation, and that's required by DOT. And thank you, Frank. So that just came out. I know it's tough to see, but I'm just going to summarize it very quickly.
All right.
So the ICE process consists of three steps, basically. They call ICE 1, ICE 2, and ICE 3. We have completed ICE 1 and submitted to DOT, and I think that memorandum was presented at the last meeting identifying the concepts. Because there are more than two concepts typically, DOT would require us to move into ICE 2, which is step 2, because step 2 is going to narrow down to, in this case, I think we're looking at a traffic light or a roundabout. So we need to narrow it down to one concept. In the event if ICE 2 cannot, you know, DOT for some reason is torn, they couldn't pin down on a concept, then we would move to ICE 3. So that's the process. And by ICE 3, we would have to pin down and DOT would have to recommend a concept for the design. So once a concept has been recommended, we would move forward the 25% design. And that's critical because we can't move forward the 25% design without narrowing down to a recommended design concept.
Ken, what's the difference between ICE 2 and ICE 3? ICE 2 is narrowing down. You said, but if you can't narrow it down in ICE 2, what does ICE 3 do that's different than ICE 2?
Good question. I think a lot has to do with, if you read the DOT step approach, it's a level of analysis. And I think the easiest way to describe ICE 2 and ICE 3, the difference has to do with, for example, safety. They're gonna look into which concept gives the highest safety score in this case. Is it the signalized roundabout or is it the roundabout itself? And they also look into capacity. You know, we talk about safety. What about capacity? It's important which concept, you know, give us a, you know, good operational capacity, whether it's levels, so it's B or C or 1 or the other, you know. And so, so all that, really, when you get into ICE 3, it's very detailed analysis. You're talking about traffic calming, you know, the speed of vehicle going through each intersection. So that's the difference between 2 and 3. So I think once we move through that, then we get into the 25% design. And as we all know, the most critical component of the 25% design is, once that's done, then DOT will have to review it. So as I go through the step, you know, the 25% design, DOT will review it and we would have a comments resolution, and then we would go to the public hearing. And once the public hearing, you know, it's done, you know, everyone gives a thumbs up, then we move on to the 75% design, the 100% design, and then the final, final design, which is called the PSNE. Basically, it's the, you know, the specs, the estimate and all that. So each of those steps requires DOT review. And based on our experience with DOT, to turn around time, you're looking at at least a month to two months. So as part of this next step, the project schedule, the draft, you know, project schedule that we put together, we have assumed that the review by DOT, you're looking at at least one to two months. So overall, the project schedule is going to be about a little over two years. And after two years and three months, at least six to eight months of those, it's DOT review process. Sometimes they're fast, sometimes they're slow, so we're kind of at their mercy a little. So I think that kind of, you know, I know I walked through it very quickly, the major component of the design phases and the review process. And so you're looking at, you know, again, you know, a little over two years of a process, and that's when the whole project's going to be completely done.
And Ken, from your experience, if a project needs to acquire land by eminent domain, how long can that add to the timeline?
Well, typically, that's the last resort. Hopefully, we don't have to go there. You know, that could be, you know, worked out with in terms of the assessors and, you know, the price and all that. So I think that certainly, that could vary really, you know, because now you're getting a lot of people involved and the butters could hire their own, you know what, you know, and try to fight with the town and all that. So.
So does the state take that into consideration when you're doing the ICE to say that, you know, we want to move forward, we certainly want to make something safer than it is today? We know that there are proponents of roundabouts, but if there's a chance that that could delay us actually moving forward in a timely manner, would they acknowledge that?
I think the right of way is something that they would consider.
Okay.
And, you know, and again, you know, I think the word hardship is the key word. You know, you got to prove to them that, you know, yep, you got a right of way impact. What's your hardship here? You know, do you have to knock down? It's the right of way. Now your roundabout is like two feet away from someone's house, you know, so they'll look into all that in detail.
Any questions?
Ken, could you just, thank you very much for this. This is exactly what I was asking for. Can you just put a pin in where we make the decision between the roundabout and the traffic light in the process?
I think when we get to ICE 2, that's when, you know, we are really dive deeper into the two concepts, you know, the signalize and the roundabout concepts. And we would have a pretty good idea, you know, where we're going. And I know just during the preliminary round, you know, DOT had hinted to us that, you know, their preference is the roundabout. So, but nothing is official or, you know, there's no recommendation at this point. So I think by ICE 2, we would know, you know, where we're heading. And then once, if that's determined and recommended, and then this is where we would discuss.
So if I'm reading your chronology correctly up there, December, January, in a very short time, we'll make that decision.
I think so.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Yes. And of the year, we will get to ICE 2, you know, process.
And if, and if the money needs to be spent in a certain period of time and let's go the route that the state says, we want you to do the roundabout, we see you're going to need to take land by eminent domain, and that's going to push you past 2026, versus, and they say, okay, that's okay, versus they push back and say, no, you have the money to spend at a certain timeline and we know that, you know, potentially eminent domain could push us out, I've heard can be, you know, multiple years. We don't want that. Does that take into consideration because we don't want the money to be taken off the table? That's for sure.
It's hard for me to really, you know, dictate what, how DOT is going to react to all this. But one thing for sure is, you know, they know that, you know, we have 1.3 and the project's going to need more than 1.3. So basically, in the DOT listing, it's listed 3.9. So they, you know, they're going to find other funding source. So how they're going to really package so that they could pay for this project, you know, that's a little unknown at this point. So.
Okay.
So let me, I want to confirm a few things we talked about last week, just to make sure that the, I understood it. DOT has this on their tip list at 3.9 million dollars.
Yes.
Which is enough to, as far as we can tell at least, is enough to cover either one. What was important to me last week was that, and I think you sort of reinforced it just now, once it's on, once you're on the tip list, then when that project comes on, DOT has to figure out where the money is going to come from. They won't, I don't mean like we don't care, but it's like they have to sort of figure out where the money is going to come from. So the issue, I think, around the federal earmark, interestingly enough, our interest might be in getting a job done, a project done sooner, so therefore we want to use that money. But the actual people with skin in the game on that earmark, as far as the expiration date goes, is DOT. Because if that did expire, there'd still be a 1.3 million dollar chunk of money that's needed. It's just DOT would have to find somewhere else to get it from. Did I understand that right last week?
Yes, because, yeah, the bottom line is they have to secure 3.9 million. Whether, wherever that source is, you know, NPO folks will try to figure that out.
So the mercenary bottom line for me is that ain't our problem like I thought it was. So that's why I'm double checking because I don't mean we wouldn't try. I'm just saying, that's not our, that money isn't actually, we have to come up with somewhere else. It's actually DOT's got to come up with somewhere else. So that was helpful for me to learn last week because all of a sudden, that whole cost issue does truly get off the table other than, it might have a timing implication. So there's still something there, but the cost issue. When I looked at your, I actually went through your statement of work, which I think was a more detailed version of what you just showed us there. The one question that I had, I think, is one that Eileen asked. As I was reading what you had in the statement of work that lays out the process, I was noting that the exclusions, quite understandably, that Beta has is all around the actions and the costs associated with taking property by eminent domain. That's on the town's shoulders. So the issue of the cost of taking property is still an open factor for us in terms of which way we go. I couldn't find the place in the statement of work, the scope that you had. I couldn't find a real clear place where eminent domain considerations worked into that ICE 2 decision. It's kind of like, well, we're going to make a decision about the design we want, and if there's an implication that we just take people's property, well, you know, in essence, the decision to take the property gets made without ever being factored in to the whole picture. Am I being too paranoid?
No, I, our experience is, you know, during the ICE process, when it comes to right of way or taking, you know, you have to prove hardship. So if you can't prove any hardship because of the, you know, right of way taking, you know, to them, that's, you know, something that eminent domain is not hardship to them.
Well, that's what worries me because it is to us. I mean, taking people's private property just because, well, it's what we decided to do. I'm both concerned on pure principle grounds of taking people's private property without it being an absolute, I don't have, we don't have any other choice, but it's also, there's only one corner I care about, that I think I need to care about, and that's the one that has the building on West Street and on the north side of 27, that has businesses in a building where the original rotary design was cutting severely. The other two corners, you're cutting into swales and it's like, I have a hard time thinking, even the vet would care that much about what's going on there. That one bothers me because in addition to the money it would take to get that, if we drive businesses out of town, we also lose a revenue stream. There's a lot of other things that go along with that other than just acquiring that property. So that is a concern that I have. You had five or four options, four options maybe, and I think it was option C for the roundabout, which was the peanut option. And I can't, and I remember it was 7,000 square feet versus 12,000, which tells me that probably eminent domain is not as punitive there. But I can't remember what was wrong with that option. It seemed to me that it didn't make the cut or.
Yeah, I think we have four options. Option one is the conventional one lane roundabout, which I think our analysis shows that based on the heavy traffic volume that you had, you're going to need more than just the one lane. So we went to a hybrid, meaning it's not fully two lane, but it's depending on the traffic volume approach. And so, and that option has 12,000 square feet, which is the highest. So we need, you know, if we were to get into the roundabout, we said, what can we do to minimize the right of way impact? Which we went with the non-conventional roundabout. It looks like a peanut or a.
Kidney bean?
Kidney bean, thank you. Whatever you want to call it. So that came out to 7,000.
Right.
Okay. So, and then the last option was we took the one, the 12,000. Hey, can we shift the circle, you know, left, right, up, you know, so we did that. And the best that we could do was, it was only, I think, 11,000 square feet, so knock off like a thousand.
So the one I was interested in was the 7,000 kidney bean, and I couldn't remember what, I couldn't remember whether you said anything about that that made that a bad idea.
I think that's going to be all part of the ICE process. When we, you know, when we get into if DOT, the preference is going to be roundabout. So we're going to look into, we're going to dive deeper into gee, you know, 12,000 square feet is a lot. Is there a way that we can minimize the right of way impact?
Which is, and that's my real question that started, how does that eminent domain feed into the process? And that's how, in my head, that's where it would feed in. What can we do? Could we do with the kidney bean, again, I'm only worried right now until I get disabused of my notion by some owner that says, why are you doing, taking my property and saying you don't care? If you did the kidney bean and then you also did the option, that last option of shifting the center of the kidney bean, maybe you take, you do less damage. You know, I'm getting too far down the road on thinking, but what I, from a process standpoint, I'm asking the question, one, does eminent domain impact feed in to the conclusion? If we're shooting for a decision on something by December, then it's like, well, that decision ought to take that consideration into effect, even if, even if it is a roundabout. What kind of roundabout is it and where is it centered off of all the things that, if we have a clear understanding of what we could do to minimize eminent domain, minimize negative, real negative eminent domain impacts, because it might not be equivalent in all four corners. How does that fit into the process? And I couldn't find it very clearly in the statement.
The eminent domain per se is not highlighted or spelled out in the ICE process. And the state would view that as, because that's always the last resort. You know, if there is a taking that's required and if the roundabout that works and there aren't any hardship, you know, that shows that the roundabout is, you have to remove this building to build the roundabout or if this new roundabout is going to be two feet away from a building, then, you know, to them, that's something, it's on the town, you know. It boils down to eminent domain at the very end.
So that was the part that confused me. If the state's saying eminent domain is the last resort in me thinking about how this all, well, the signalization doesn't have eminent domain. So trying to understand how to think about that, both in terms of how we should think about it, but also how the state would think about it in its review of whatever conclusions we reach is what I'm wrestling with.
They can, during the ICE process, my understanding is that you can, the town can comment with their concerns and they use that during the ICE process?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The town could certainly comment on if, you know, at that point, if you think there's going to be a potential, you know, eminent domain of private property, that certainly could be raised. But then they're going to ask, oh, can you prove to me, you know, that you have gone through. through all the process with the property owner, and they are not budging, and so you have to do this?
Okay.
So.
So when we get to that decision point for sure, I would want to know how much property, what's the square footage for our concept, and an educated estimate, and I guess, I don't know how sensitive you have to be about estimating the acquisition costs for an eminent domain taking.
You need appraisals?
Yeah, the town, the town appraises.
I'd want to know what that number is from a cost standpoint, and what the volume is and the impact. And I would guess that before we would move, move on that, we would actually probably want to have a, have a meeting with the owners of those corners, and say, look, here's the, here's the issue, here's what we're doing, here's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
To minimize the impact. We think, you know, we think three of you, we're not doing anything to, or if that's the case, but one of you, we're trying to do whatever we can not to do more than we have to. Can, is this going to, is this a big, you know, big deal, little deal?
Right.
So we know what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Because it's, it may not matter to the state, but it matters to us, yeah.
It's negotiable with the property owners.
Right.
We've had several projects in Franklin that involve eminent domain, and ultimately, that's, that's just a mechanism for acquiring legal title. That's pretty straightforward in highway projects. The question becomes damages, whether you get them to agree to a figure, or they really, they want, sky's the limit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark, does the damage issue work, that the town sets a number, and then if the homeowner disagrees with, or the property owner, if they disagree with it, then they contest it in court?
Yes, so you, you basically, you do the appraisal, you offer what's called a protanto, based on what your appraisal is. If you, if you come up that it's not worth anything, then you don't offer anything, but it could be any, any number. And then the property owner can accept the protanto without prejudice to their rights to ask a court to give them additional compensation.
So that the actual construction doesn't get delayed, it just, the payment gets, comes later for the...
I mean, there might be some very exotic situations where you could challenge the taking itself, but typically, no. Basically, it's a town meeting action, followed by select board action, within 30 days you record at the registry, and title is vested at that point.
Okay.
About that.
Okay. Any more questions?
I had a couple more questions, Ken, if you wouldn't mind. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to ask you to maybe try to put another pin in your, in your schedule for me. I'm assuming that you're going to be our interface with MassDOT, and you're going to be our advocate for what the town decides it would prefer, and there are a couple, there are the two options, and so we're going to have to give you direction, I assume, as to how we want you to proceed with DOT. Is that correct? Is that the way it works?
Yes, we will work with, you know, the town, and, but we, we would also provide, you know, our experience with working with DOT, the insights and, and for town to consider.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely what we need to rely on, is your expertise and your experience of having done it before, and...
Right.
Absolutely, that's what we need.
Because the last thing we want is, we don't want to mislead the town.
Right.
You know, we want, just based on our experience, this is how DOT will react, and we can go from there.
So the town then needs to make a decision between the roundabout and the traffic lights at some point, and that's what I was going to ask you, if you could put another pin in your schedule, at where you need us to make that decision, so that we can kind of back out from that.
ICE 2, right?
Yeah, I think best guess would be ICE 2. So we're looking at...
Before the start of ICE 2, so before Jan, before December.
And, and of ICE 2.
And of ICE 2.
And of ICE 2.
Yeah, once DOT had a chance to review ICE 2 that we submitted, and they would make a, a decision, which I think they probably would, if they couldn't make a decision, then we go to ICE 3.
Right.
So I would say the earliest at this point would be at the end of ICE 2.
All right, so that we just go forward with both proposals, and see what MassDOT says back to us about them?
Correct.
And then we make a determination when we hear from MassDOT?
Yes.
You just said something important. Pete asked, when do we have to make a decision? And if I just heard you write, it's DOT that will make the decision at the end of ICE 2. Did I miss something?
DOT will make a determination based on their review as to what's best for this intersection. And then the town will, could react to it.
Okay, good.
But going through ICE 2, we don't need to tell the DOT that we prefer one or the other, is what I hear you saying, that we don't need to make that decision, we just present both the roundabout and the, and the intersection lights.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, okay.
And last, but if we knew, you know, we looked at ICE 2 and said, ah, this is the only way to go.
Yes, if you know there is a...
Then we tell them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say that again, it, it helps if we make the...
But you could tell them, you don't have to tell them.
Oh, okay. Does it help if we tell them or not? They, they're not going to pay attention.
Depends what you're telling them.
I, I don't think there's anything wrong with just telling DOT, but, you know, they're going to have, they will make the decision based on, you know, the facts, the engineering, the analysis, and all that.
Yeah, yeah, they've got traffic engineers for you to talk to.
Right. So it's, it's a combination of the folks at District 3, that's another group of engineering, and then it's also the domain office down in Boston, they will also have a say. So it's two groups of people at MassDOT.
Yeah. All right, so the, the reason I'm asking all this is because the three of us at this table don't agree, and so that it's important for us to know when we, we need as a town to put forward a...
At least one of us at this table has not decided.
I, I'm waiting to see what the state says, and I'm also concerned about eminent domain and seeing what plays out there, because I just don't want to make any general assumptions. So as people have said to me in the last two weeks, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I'm not, but I'm also representing the town in voices, so I want to make sure that three people up here just don't wildly say, this is what we're going to do, and not take businesses and landowners into consideration. So there's still conversations we had, but I, DOT is going to set some tone here.
So if, to go back to last week, correct me if I'm wrong, I understood that, that DOT has a preference for roundabouts, and if you feel strongly that you want to do something else as a town, you need to advocate with them to convince them that there's compelling reasons to do the alternate to the roundabout. Am I incorrect on that?
Let me just repeat what I had said, I think, last weekend. So we presented ICE 1, and DOT has expressed to us, based on what we have submitted, their preference is roundabout. And they haven't committed, you know, because we have to go through all the process. So if, if the town, you know, has any concern with a roundabout, there's nothing wrong with letting them know, but they would like to know why.
Right.
And I also, I mean, I think we, we want to continue to get feedback from residents, because certainly after last week, I got both sides, right? I got people that are wildly for it, and I got people that are like, what, are you kidding me? So again, it's, I don't believe it's, we will end up making a decision, but it's not without feedback from a lot of the residents. So one meeting does not define one way or the other. But, any more questions over here?
Ken, can I ask you one more question, please? It had to do with the, the taking and the hardship. I understood you to say that MassDOT is going to say, if we have to do a taking, that's not a hardship, that, that's just part of the process, and so that we can't make that argument that we don't want to do the roundabout because it's, because we have to do, if we have to do a taking.
Based on our experience with the project that we have worked with, taking right-of-way, you know, for a roundabout design, it's, it's pretty common.
Yeah, just expected part of the process.
Right, right, but there are, you know, right.
But, but Ken, you said, but if the taking represents a hardship, now you define it as...
Yes.
A rotary going by two feet off somebody's house is, that's an easy one.
Right.
If you ruin a business, I don't know whether DOT says they don't care or not, but that's, it's not that, a hardship doesn't count, it's that it...
Right.
It's not the taking itself that's the pri, if you didn't hurt anybody, and it costs the town $10 million to acquire the land that you're taking, DOT would say, oh, none of the people losing the land have a hardship, so cough up the $10 million. I'm exaggerating, I doubt it's $10 million, but, so if I follow that right, the cost of taking is going to be on our shoulders.
Right, right.
A hardship would be if they see something that this taking does that really damages property in a way that the state...
If you're actually going to take down a building, put this out, physically take, but there's enough, there is at least to me to be enough land in the various sides that you're only talking about.
Except for that one, it depends where it is, but that one corner, yeah, we're not going to take the building, then we're just going to ruin your parking lot.
Right.
And you've got four businesses there, that's, that's implication.
You can't get in from the backside.
Right. I have two questions. One, at ICE 2, if I read it, I may get the, I may have this wrong, when I went through the scope of work...
Yeah.
Coming out of ICE 2, you'll have, we'll have four alternatives that will have been analyzed?
Well, I, I think what's going to happen is, you know, once we're in ICE 2, so the determination is hopefully, you know, if it's going to be a traffic light or a roundabout, so we'll start with. If it's going to be a roundabout, then which option would it be?
So then which would get you four? You'd have three roundabout options?
Right.
And one traffic light option, assuming that there's not a second traffic light option.
Right.
I can picture how there could be, given what we're doing with the, with the downtown stuff, is one would be to restrict the flow, kind of which is what we're doing temporarily at least, or widening it to where the lanes are bigger. So I can see more than one option if we chose to go there. But most likely right now, there'd be one signalization option, and does it have to be, in other words, what I'm really getting at is, and if we decide, nope, it's the non-standard rotary that looks like a kidney bean that's rotated over here, that's the one that minimizes our liability for eminent domain, are we obligated to provide other options on top of that, so that the state could come in and say, well, we don't care, we like circles better than kidney beans? And you're, remember, we're not on the hook for the eminent domain cost.
No, I think DOT will be very amenable to a roundabout design that minimizes right-of-way impact.
And there's a question here from someone in the audience, Chris Potts is asking, just from this conversation that's taking place right now, we have more or less eliminated having a one-lane roundabout, just based on the volume that we know takes place at that intersection today.
I think based on the volume, the analysis that we have looked at, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Because you don't want to design something that, you know, is not going to work.
Right.
You know, so.
Are you good with any more? I just want to see if...
Any more questions? No, thank you, Ken.
What, one point that you can hear, and the audience that cares about this can hear, I've come in with, I've had three issues. The cost, the, the, the cost issue of what, the difference between the projects, which has gone away. The second is the impact on people's private property, which has not gone away. And then you and I talked, I think by email, before last week's meeting, and I had the question, my concern was the impact that a roundabout versus a signal, signal intersection would have on the incentives people who will ultimately be living on Hospital Road would have. And your comment was, I actually think that roundabout would, would be preferable, and at first, that was, at first I wasn't thinking that way, and then I put myself going down Central Avenue, going into Boston, and it's right, the road after Charles River, there's a stop sign that, it's the one that runs into Westwood, and there's a church on the left, and I, and I said, if you were going into Boston, knowing what that light is like during rush hour right now, and if it was a roundabout instead, would you be happy or would you be mad? And I said, I actually think I'd rather take my chance on the roundabout. So in many ways for me, the trap, the broader traffic impact, kind of, my instinct is to, is to agree with what you said, which is, the roundabout probably will improve that flow down 27 from Hospital Road, or up 27 to get to Hospital Road. The cost, I'm still checking to make sure, but right now, the cost is not a factor. So that's why you're getting all the questions from eminent domain for me.
Gotcha.
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify one thing or ask a question. If we were all the way at the, I guess at the end of the process, you said MassDOT is going to recommend something, we have an opportunity to say that that's a hardship or to argue back. Am I correct in assuming that if MassDOT doesn't believe that that's enough of a hardship, MassDOT actually has the final decision, not us?
I think so.
I, I think MassDOT would really have to think very hard if there's a strong objection from the town and a...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying they would ignore us, I'm just saying...
They have to think, they have to think hard.
They get to decide in the end.
They, they would have to think hard, and I'm not going to tell you what DOT is going to decide to do, so they would have to think twice. So, and, yeah, so that's...
I'm just saying, we don't have the right to overrule them in the end, is that correct?
Um, they will listen, definitely, for sure, you know, ultimately, what they would decide to do, I, I just can't speak for them, you know, MassDOT.
I'm not asking you to speak for them, I'm just saying, like, if I was in a fight with my brother, I always win. So like, I'm just saying, like, at, at the end, like, I, there may be, there may be a point where we disagree, and they say, that's nice, you disagree, we heard you, we completely understand your process.
Yeah.
But we still win, like, I always win against my brother. So like, I'm just wondering if, like, at some point, somebody wins.
Yeah, so, so personally, you know, I, I've been in the business for many years, and I've done many, many design, so I, you know, haven't come across personally where, you know, there's a strong objection, and then DOT would basically do otherwise, do otherwise. So, but that's not to say, you know, because there are cases out there, you know, that's ongoing, that I'm not going to get into, but, but personally, you know, I...
There could be lengthy fights if so.
Yeah, but, but I, yeah, I mean, every, every, DOT had District 3, 4, 5, well, there's six districts, so every group, you know, there, you know, the, of folks, they're a little, you know, different. So I like to think that District 3, which Matthew belongs to, that group of folks are very reasonable.
Gotcha. And then I guess I have one question for you guys, just from a standpoint of the process and what you were mentioning, Gus, about the eminent domain issues, and wanted to research that, who is it for the town that will do that, so that you would be ready to present that at the ICE process in December or January, just because I'd hate for you to get to the point that the ICE process, as you still didn't have your questions answered, so I'm just curious, who will do that for you guys?
Yeah, I assume the, the, the square footage issue, you have to get from the designs that there, where you have an ICE, so that's, that's going to be driven off that, and then getting, I'm assuming getting an estimate of the eminent domain costs, is there estimators out there that can do that, that would, like, I don't think it's us with the...
I didn't think it was the three of you, I was just wondering, who would, who would be responsible, because I know that, you know, Christine obviously has a ton of things on her plate, I just wasn't sure if we knew exactly who was going to work on that.
Well, this is only a little thing to add to it.
I know, I know it's only a little...
So is there a letter that would go out to the four property owners at the corners? All right, so you've got Banfield that has one corner, you have the Goddard School in the other corner, you have Paul McCackney on the third, and I don't know who owns the building where all those businesses...
David McCready owns it.
Is it McCready? I mean, basically, it's like, it would be foolish not to in the next week to send out something, that we're in a conversation, we have no idea of direction, this is definitely going to go, but you need to be privy to, these are, this is what's happening, if they're not already privy to it already, and then we would have to start doing some, I'm assuming the town would have to do some research on, like you said earlier, Mark, with assessing the land and what the value is.
Right, we'd bring Yvonne into it, our principal assessor.
Okay.
And bring her up to the process as well.
I would, you know, just at that point, I would feel better about having that conversation with them, when, we don't have to have final designs, but if we know what we've got, because you had to bring people in and say, hey, we might take some of your property, how you feel about it. If we had something that said, here's what we're looking for, and here's where the impact is, it's not final, we haven't, you know, we haven't formalized it, but otherwise, I think you'll get unproductive response. I know how I would answer that question, if somebody couldn't tell me how much of my property they would think about taking.
Well, I think the only thing is that... Can you sum up the drawings you already did?
Hmm?
I think that the drawings you already did, at least I remember when you were talking last week, you had said something about the last drawing, you did, impacted that corner the least because of the shift. So do your drawings already have some of that information?
But I, I mean, right now, technically, they're not even under contract to us yet for this, so, I, yeah, I think, I don't think we're going to see, I'd be surprised to see drastically different things, but I think you guys would get started and work on it first before we do...
Yeah, when we get into ICE two, you know, as we dive deeper, you know, you probably, instead of having four roundabout concept, you might end up just having two, you know.
Frankly, I wouldn't reach out to the property owners until you have brackets.
Okay.
To range or something because of worst-case scenarios.
Right.
Okay.
And thank you again.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, so, we've discussed, so now do we want to vote to sign the contract with Beta Engineering for West Street 27 Design? I'm not sure Chris is asking any questions, I think she's just making comments.
Just making sure, okay.
And Chris, if I have that wrong, you can type in, but I, I see that you're, you are, you're thinking it's too bad that the single main, round, the single lane roundabout has already been removed from consideration, and you've given some data points for 300-plus trucks a day, 45 miles an hour, et cetera, so, if, if you want us to discuss it, ping back, otherwise, I think you're more or less trying to share some information with us. Okay.
So I have, on the contract, I have one, this is, this is only because I've seen this five or six times now, there's one clause, it's one word that is in, and this is not going to trash the contract, it's just that I keep seeing it, so our template is wrong, and nobody's fixed the template, and it's on page five of the contract, paragraph 17, there's a type, the typo, this has, this is the paragraph on notification requirements and what the contractor has to do, and there's one place down there that says it's within, you know, after mail, after the notification has been mailed by the town rather than to the town, it's not going to confuse anybody, but it's saying exactly the wrong thing, and I, I think with Ben, I've commented about four times on that one paragraph, and this, now that it showed up again, it's the template that's, that's one, two-letter word that's exactly going in the wrong direction, so, but that's just.
Noted.
Okay, with that, I didn't have any questions.
You got any questions on?
No.
Okay, all right, so.
I move that we sign the contract with Beta Engineering for a West slash, West Street slash Route 27 intersection design, period of performance from September 17th, 2024 to December 31st, 2026, in the amount of $300,000, now, can I combine the authorization?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm going to have a hard time with that.
And that we authorize an additional $30,000 from Chapter 90 for design to bring the total for that contract to $330,000.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right, thank you, Ken, and Mo. All right, so next up is Gris Mill and Six Gris Mill Discussion, and who's spearheading this, Christine, who's?
I think you had a citizen's comment at the last hearing.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we said we'd move it, the Conservation Commission was invited to be here, as well as the Gris Mill Committee to have those discussions as well.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, I'm happy to, since you're answering my question.
I already got a broken ankle, don't break yours.
I know, I know, I know. Thank you very much, my name is Thomas Monti, I live at 145 Spring Street, which is the Clark Kingsbury House, it is along with the Gris Mill, and with the pond, and my house, and then a couple of other outbuildings that make the Historic District, which, that was the third historic district that was really approved in town meeting. I find it interesting, I hadn't really expected some of the things that I was going to hear today by earlier speakers, and one of, for example, what I would call the branding of the town of Medfield, what are our signs going to say, what sort of pictures are going to be on the signs, et cetera, and I can't imagine the branding of Medfield to miss the fact that this is an extremely historic town, I mean, historic like conquered, the revolution perhaps didn't start there, but if you look here, rather, but if you did look, if you look at the number of historic homes we have, there are plenty of things for people to look at, to see, to do, that make Medfield really unique, that helps the businesses, the restaurants, the values of all our properties, et cetera, et cetera. I also understand we have a big, there's really an issue today about whether or not private property rights of one individual that owns property that abuts, and I certainly do respect, and I, and I hear, I've heard that in the two town, or, I'm sorry, not town meetings, but selectmen meetings that I've been to, that's a very important, that's very important to the people on this committee and the people that have come here, to speak and to listen to these meetings, and I think that, that's something that's very important to the Historic Gris Mill Committee, if you will, and also the, the Historic District. Now, having said that, I'm just here as an interested citizen in how we use and how we can use the Gris Mill property, and until very, very recently, maybe 10 or 20 days ago, I thought of the Gris Mill property to include where the memorial is, where the turnaround is, that little, little bit of forest, and access to what some people that have been in town a lot longer than I have referred to as the beach to the pound, to the pond, rather, and the fishing hole, and the hockey playing in the winter, et cetera, et cetera. Well, I guess I was disabused of that notion because the town doesn't own all that property. There are some easements that run to people on Gris Mill Road that give those people access to cross each other's property, there are easements, and I'm not here to recommend or even suggest, I'm really here to ask some questions, how important is the Gris Mill to this historic nature of this town, what limits would be made if parts of the Gris Mill, and I put that in quotes, because I realize, I, I'm, I'm not just talking about the town-owned piece of land, I'm talking about what has been used for 100 years as access to the Gris Mill and the pond, the beach, et cetera, how important is, is that to the town? And I, that's really all I'm, I'm, I'm here to do, is ask those questions, and I would just hope that the town would try to keep in mind the historic nature of Medfield as part of its brand, and the Gris Mill and the Clark Kingsbury Historic District are extremely important parts of what makes Medfield Medfield.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You asked a question, how important is it to the town, and I think that's, I think you probably know it's a rhetorical question, it's very important to the town, my question is, so it's very important to the town, what are the implications of that answer in the context of this discussion?
Well, I think the context of this discussion began, or at least I was asked to comment, when I was told that the Conservation Commission had made a determination to allow a fence. Well, the Conservation Commission decided that there was not a problem with wetlands, there are only two determinations in the request made in the WPA Form 1 to the Conservation Commission, and that was that there would be, that the Medfield Conservation Commission make the following determinations, the two boxes that were checked, Box C, whether the work depicted on plans referenced below is subject to the Wetlands Protection Act, and D, whether the area and/or work depicted on plans referenced below is subject to the jurisdiction of any municipal wetlands ordinance or bylaw. Before the last 45 seconds, I never mentioned wetlands, I certainly would not disagree with rights of private property, nor would I disagree with the rights that we've given as voters to the commission that works on and deals with conservation. I'm suggesting that there are other issues that should, so it, we need input from a group like the Selectmen, not just the Conservation Commission, because I have no doubt that their determination that wetlands are not impacted, I'm just assuming that that is correct, but that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the use of an important asset of this community.
Well, would you deem that open space, is that what you're more or less referring to?
I guess.
Okay.
I guess.
The use of an important space that belongs to somebody.
Yes, that's why, and I really tried to, to make that really clear, that it is private property.
I think one consideration is.
Can you, do you mind grabbing a mic, otherwise?
So I didn't even know this was going on until last night, so I.
And you are, I just.
I'm Jennifer Hillenmeyer, I live on Preservation Way, which is right across the street, so Preservation Way and the Gris Mill is referenced, we have certain easements through that area, we use that frequently, my kids cut through there to walk to Wheelock, to the fields, they cut there to get up to Metta Comet, because we don't have sidewalks, so we use that area a lot, I cut, go through there walking the dog, we pull in that turnaround to put in our kayaks, to use the pond, the beach, things where, as a community, we're frequently using that area, and I am unclear as to what this, how this gate will restrict our access, it is an easement that is in our deeds, I know in a, in my home that I have in New Hampshire, some small changes to the easements are causing major issues with like getting the titles right and stuff like that.
Okay.
So I, and I don't know the implications, because I hadn't had time to research, but I just think it's another consideration, because there are several property owners that do have easements through here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That is great, thank you.
Can I speak on behalf of CONCOM, I think I can lend some priority and focus your discussion a little bit, if I just explain what CONCOM did, so that everyone understands.
I think you can take it off there, Deb, if you want to, so you can, almost like do karaoke if you want to take it off.
Because I might make a lot of noise.
Mike, it's time to fix the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, there, that way.
Thank you so much, all right, so, just to back up, okay, so just to back up, everybody, this came, an issue came to CONCOM's attention probably in the middle of May, and we heard, you know, some information that suggested that, yes, something had happened on private property, and there was something that had been done, you know, by buyer on behalf of the town, and so we, we had some phone calls and concerned neighbors reaching out, and CONCOM said, hmm, what's going on, let's, let's, you know, they're coming to us, let's investigate and see, so we had letters and so forth from neighbors, and we took those, and we decided our first and next best step was to have an informational meeting so that everyone could attend, share their concerns, we could gather information, and we could figure out what was going on in this area, because I think that, just to be clear, that the statement was made that on a private property owner's, you know, land, that the town had come in and had put four to six inches of gravel, and then followed by wood chips to enlarge a parking space and to create a larger and bigger turnaround for cars and to create more access.
So Deb, let me ask a quick question on clarity there.
Yep.
It is not the first time in, in the last 50 years the town has gone onto that property, right, so just want to make sure people don't think the town did something willingly, this is something we've been doing for decades.
Correct.
That we go in.
But the issue for CONCOM, though, was complicated, because we did look at it, and I, I'm just going to give you a list of all of the documents that we looked at, because we really did our due diligence here, and we looked at the deeds, we looked at the town's order of taking, which was in 1989, we looked at the conservation easement, we looked at the Declaration of Covenants for Preservation Trail Easement and the Bylaws of Preservation Trail Association, we looked at the water supply agreement, read the, and when I say looked at and read, we read the reservation to service the water supply agreement, we read the abutters emails and letters, we looked at the plans, multiple plans, and we walked out on the site, and was very clear to us that it's, it's pretty complicated in terms of who can do what, where, and when, so you might be interested to know that the conservation easement, which can, you know, covers a large portion of this tract, and you have to look at it on a plan, but the conservation easement says on it, for example, no dumping, no dumping loam, no dumping gravel, no dumping, no parked cars, right, so, and that the Preservation Trail Easement provides that only the owners of property on Gris Mill and Preservation Trail are allowed to use the Preservation Trail Easement by right, so there are a lot of conflicting interests out there, for CONCOM, because of what's happened, it raised two issues, one is the dumping of the gravel and the wood chips and the work removing the trees and the vegetation, that triggers, that's a violation, because one of CONCOM's jobs under the statute, under Chapter 131, Section 40, is protection of the wetlands, and that means we look at waterways and rivers and streams and ponds and banks and wetlands and you name it, and anything that's within a jurisdictional area, which could be 50 feet, 100 feet, or 200 feet, if you want to work within that area, alter it at all, which means dumping anything, moving, cutting brush, whatever, you have to just come to CONCOM for a permit to do that work, and the permit is usually granted if it's the town, the town doesn't pay a permitting fee, because that's part of the state statute, it's a state law, it's state regulations, there are a lot of them, here's just part of what we look at when we're just dealing with the wetlands, it's really tiny type, it's 200-plus pages, we spend a lot of time, sorry, we spend a lot of time with our, with our agent, who happens to be excellent, our information, so that's one piece, now we think when people get confused, there's a second piece that CONCOM is involved in, there's a separate statute, this is Chapter 40, Section 8C, this is tells you about CONCOM and its land management obligations and duties, and tells you about CONCOM as a commission, it defines its authority, you know, the authority that has to manage the land, that it can own property, that can hire employees, that it can, you know, is responsible for the open space and recreation plan, that it can manage monies, that it, it, it functions as an autonomous board, and so there's that land management piece, and then it's the wetlands piece, and in this particular area, I think you're seeing the confluence of both, and it gets complicated by the easements and by, you know, just the other pieces of that property, the drainage easements and what the easements all say. So when this came to CONCOM, we did have the informational meeting, we, we scheduled it, I think, for June 20th, Mr. Hartzell, our agent, reached out to Mr. Judge and reached out to Mr. Beatty and, and Mr. Courtney in particular, and made sure, tried to make sure that they were available for that meeting, our meeting unfortunately was canceled unexpectedly, so it was rescheduled for July 18th, it's my understanding he reached out again to try to make sure that the people who were most concerned and involved with this would attend. We held a meeting, and we took information, we understood that we didn't have complete information, but it was Mr. Courtney's decision as the landowner to decide what his next step was, and he indeed filed what's something called a request for determination of applicability, and that's an application that's asking the commission to look at this property and evaluate it under the town bylaw and the state regulations, and to make a determination, is this work in a resource area, if so, does it adversely impact the resource such that there's no way that you can permit it at all, or can you permit it, but it requires a more complicated, thorough process, which would be a notice of intent, so given, looking at all the regulations, looking at the photos, having the site visits, reading all of the Declaration of Restrictions, and having the agent involved, who is watching this on Zoom and is available to answer any of your questions, the commission made a determination that, yes, it was in a jurisdictional area, but there was nothing in the state act or the town bylaw that would prohibit Mr. Courtney from putting in this gate, as he described it, which is a V-shaped gate, so there's nothing that CONCOM could do, and so we issued what is called a negative determination of applicability, saying, no, the Wetlands Protection Act doesn't apply to, so it's to prevent this project, and it's my understanding that subsequently, after that was issued, that some of the neighbors appealed, and as, were asking DEP to issue a negative, I mean, to issue a superseding order or a positive determination, saying that they, they couldn't build, now, unfortunately, the Wetlands Protection Act does require that an appellant send a certified copy of that to the CONCOM, which apparently the folks who are appealing decided not to do, the appeal period has expired, and at this point in time, it's my understanding that the appeal as far as DEP is considered is gone, it's dismissed, and that one of the persons participating in that appellant group had decided to withdraw and would also be rescinded on that basis, so right now, in terms of the procedural aspect, on the, under the Wetland Protection Act, there's an RDA and, and, I mean, negative determination of applicability, and Mr. Courtney has permission to build, if he choose, not to build, but to install the gate, if he chooses to gate, because there's nothing under that statute that prohibits him from doing that, and the discussion about the historic significance and, and the other pieces in terms of the use, the historic significance, that's, that's a given, I mean, everybody values and appreciates this property, but I think when you talk about the community's access, you have to also look at, and I'm not commenting on them. not commenting on them, but you have to look at all of those, the declaration of, the conservation easement, and the Preservation Trail covenant and declaration, because that runs just to the private property owners. And so what, and how they choose to manage that is something, again, we have nothing to say about, if you look at that map, you'll see that just that tiny bit of town property that I think was at 1989, taken by the town, that just brings it in only so far. So it's complicated, and we are not attempting to address any of that. It had appeared that that might have been, that town property might have been under care, custody, and control of Concom, but John Woodhull has done some research for the commission, he's done a lot of our, you know, sort of property ownership and deed research to really sort of like fine tune the open space and recreation plan, and what seems to be, is that, I think John may be able to describe it better than I, is that it was, it was taken by eminent domain by the town back in 1989, and by a town meeting vote, was in 88, there was a town meeting vote, transferred to the select board for conservation, open space, recreation, and sort of general purposes, but it was not conveyed pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 8C, which a lot of property is, which gives it sort of like special identified, you know, care, custody, and control of Concom. So this may be, this piece of, you know, so that's entry point to Griss Mill, may be entirely under the board's, you know, jurisdiction, and then, right, and then you wade right into all of those easements and declarations of restrictions.
Deb, you mentioned something at the very start, I just want to see if I heard you right, did you say where the turnaround is, that that, parking is not allowed there? Did I hear you right?
You know, I think that that, I personally think that needs to be double checked, because it's...
So give the, give the microphone to John, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is, this is John Woodhull, I'm also on the Conservation Commission. The way that I read the document would be that it was trying to get at, you can't like abandon junk cars there, it was more to that than a parking prohibition. But it is also true that the, the idea of a, that there's nothing, I guess, in the easement that would prohibit you from driving a vehicle in, the way I would, would have read it.
And I look at it as purely from safety, because the reason there's a turnaround is so you can pull in and pull out, and not have to worry about backing out on the 27, which is what I believe you brought up last week.
Right.
You know, here we are last week talking about safety, last thing we wanted is somebody backing out on 27.
I think, I think it's important, because no one has said this yet, that the landowner made clear that they don't have any problem with people doing that during the day, they just don't want them in there at night. And so they, I understand that there are issues with how you do that, and again, no one has asked my opinion on any of this, but...
But I will.
There are, there are ways that you could actually like automate the gate if you wanted to, this is not 1760 anymore, this is more modern period, and it could be set up so that the gate would automatically open and close. It, it's more money, but it could certainly be done that way.
Well, there's, there's definitely a concern of safety, that if that, if there is something prohibiting a vehicle to get to the back end of that pond, and it is...
It's, yeah.
I mean, because you, the comment was made in one of the meetings, like...
Again, the other, the other thing that the landowner said is that they would obviously leave keys with the...
Sometimes every second counts. So let me just do this, if...
And this is, this is not, this is not, I should just put this back, because this has nothing to do with this.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask, Deb, Deb, one sec, Deb, please, just so the people have a chance to talk, I'm gonna ask that...
I'm done.
No, you don't have to be done, I just want to give some other people a chance.
She wants to be done.
I just want to make sure, Concom is talking only about what Concom did, and not what Concom did.
Sure, sure.
And that was John's proposal.
Yes.
Jerry Pot, 7 Curve Street, I am on the Kingsbury Pond Committee, but I'm speaking as, as just a person in town who lives on 7 Curve and looks at the building. So the one thing I'm confused about is the conservation easement also has, and since care, custody, and control falls under Concom, well, the conservation easement that you, wait, let me, let me, can I finish my sentence? So the conservation easement that you said you went through extensively, according to conservation easement that governs the use of the Courtney family property, among others, the town has granted the perpetual right to enforce a number of restrictions against all persons, including that no building, sign, utility pole, or other temporary or permanent structure accessory to any residential, commercial, industrial purpose shall be constructed, placed, or permitted to remain in the easement area.
Yes, absolutely, the way I look at it.
So is a fence, a permanent gate?
A gate.
So you're still considering to choose...
Well, if signs, utility pole, any permanent structure...
A gate would be a permanent structure.
Right, so...
But that's, but we were asked to address something on the property under the Wetland Protection Act.
So what I'm, what I'm raising is for the town, whatever you chose to make, well, that's fine, you were talking to me, so, and you cut me off, so, so what I would say in this situation for the town, this asset that we have, we have a document, even if it wasn't Concom's role, who's responsible for saying no here? Because it clearly says we can say no. And this is why, you know, what we've been trying to raise in this is, how does this get, because if he builds the gate, it's done, right? So if, if that appeal, which was really to delay this process, so we could actually have in front of someone to say, this clearly states, granted the perpetual right to enforce a number of restrictions against all persons, the town, so who in town can do that? We can't.
So let me go to Mark.
Yes.
All right, so let me just preliminarily fill out the picture. After the town took the pond by eminent domain, that was just the pond and land to the north, very little, if any, on the southerly end, Ralph Costello came in with the proposal for the Griss Mill subdivision, Griss Mill Estates, I happen to have been on the planning board at the time, and we negotiated with him in return for giving him a longer than as of right non-through road, he wanted Griss Mill Estates longer than the planning board rules and regs permitted it. We agreed to do that in return for, among other things, the conservation restriction or easement. So that was actually the planning board's doing, and reading it today for the first time in years, I would say by default, the select board would enforce on behalf of the town, so it's got nothing to do with it.
So we are asking you to enforce, that's all, and whether it was Concom or anyone else, all we were trying to have happen was a discussion. That turnaround has been there for 50 years, and people have been parked, probably longer. It's used actively, it's an asset to the town.
I gotta stop you, Jerry.
Okay.
This is private property. It's been used for 50 years, because private property owners have decided to allow the public to use it. And the public, I differentiate the town in terms of the Kingsbury Griss Mill, the town activity, from a bunch of kids that go play hockey there and have access to the pond by using that. They're not the, this owner is not the only owner in town that has, because of, I think, fundamental faith in the town and commitment to the town, has made their private property available. The first one I'll go to is the Norfolk Hunt Club, you can walk out on that property, and nobody's, nobody's going to argue with you about it, I mean, if you're doing something stupid, they would, but that's, that's a tremendous asset for people, and it's not the only one here in town. What concerns me greatly, how we, first off, I, I can see how there may be some actual legal dimensions to this, can you put the gate up or not based on the restriction? Yeah, we can, we can enforce that one way or the other, but go beneath that, go beneath why this even was brought up. This is not an owner who said, gee, I want to put up a stockade fence, I want to block all you riffraff from my land, this is an owner that said, the town, if you want to, if you want to say the town has an interest, the town has failed to keep people from going onto my private property late at night, having parties and making a big mess.
So Gus, can I correct you?
And if they've done that, and then the town...
He has backed off from that, that has not happened, there was no police report filed, he did not call the police, and we live on 7 Curve Street, that night that, we're right there, that night that the police came down, they were on the railroad tracks, they were not at the Griss Mill.
So no cars, no cars have been in there late at night?
The police have no reports in any...
You didn't answer my question, you know that it didn't happen there, I don't get that.
Actually, I was with somebody last week at an event down the Cape, who lives on Griss Mill, who's horrified this is going on, that she...
What is going on?
That, that somebody wants to block the entrance, that, that they've lived on Griss Mill their entire time, there's never been any issues in that, that back area, that this, that suddenly this is creeping up as an issue, she was like, Eileen, I, I can't make it to your meeting, but I can tell you, the idea of putting a gate up there is crazy for all these years.
And Gus, let me just, if we're looking at legal, this owner who's bringing this up was not part of the original agreement, this association agreement and the easement were there when he bought the property. So these are terms, these are terms that he accepted when he purchased the property.
You're totally missing my point, you're totally missing my point, this is, we're having a legal discussion here, about who we're going to coerce into not doing something, and what I'm suggesting is, and I don't know this guy, I've never talked to him, I only know what I've seen in terms of some limited communications, but this is a private property owner who has made the property available, who is willing to continue to make the property available, just not late at night. I don't know whether people were there at late at night, but I went on Friday, and both, both paths have trash on them, the, there's a, there's, I think it's a Kingsbury Griss Mill rubbish barrel, and the only reason I think that is because the outside, it's kind of like a wooden container for the rubbish barrel, the thing is completely overflowing, and then there's, there's an old crappy hockey net that's sitting in six inches of water. Are we saying that it's the owner's job to maintain this property on behalf of the town and the public? Or does the owner have, if this is the wrong answer, okay, but this is something, from what I can see...
Gus, it's insulting to say that this volunteer organization that is keeping that, mowing it, taking care of it, we're volunteers, just like the state hospital where we have people, and there's trash overflowing.
There's an overflowing rubbish barrel.
Can I answer Gus's question?
So, sure.
So, the reason there's trash on the property now, is because I'm not there to pick it up. The reason that property has looked pristine for the last 15, 20 years, is because myself and the, and the Kingsbury Pond Griss Mill Committee have devoted themselves to making sure that it stays a pleasant place to visit. More people show up there and have lunch in their car just to view the pond.
No argument.
So, so to get to your point exactly, yes, this is a privately owned piece of property, but control of that property is a different question. With so many easements on the property, okay, so the town has the right to go on that property, because it has easements on that property. So it's like you owning, owning a boat that other people can use anytime they need to. Do you understand that? So...
But Dick, what I'm really saying is...
I didn't interrupt these folks when they, when they spoke.
When he's done, let me correct.
And...
My, my point is, it's, this is not, this should not be the kind of a coercive discussion,
this, I mean, if you're saying, we tried to sit down with the property owner, we tried to figure out, so, we don't like a gate, and they said, then what would you suggest instead of the gate to address the issue? Now Jerry, you're saying, this guy made this up, it didn't happen, and it's like, all right, I can't deal with that, I, I'm not, I can't...
He said it, he didn't call into the police, it didn't happen on the property, that night it happened on the railroad track, and we know it, because we're the ones who called it in, Gus.
Gus, I know you have a strong opinion about the protection of private property.
And you would too if we were taking your property, Dick.
So do I.
Yeah.
So do I.
Right, my strongest opinion though is the goodwill that allows, that has private property owners making their property available, if you, if we go to coercive reaction here, if I were a private property owner anywhere in this town, that usually allows their property to be available to the public, I would shut it down now, because if the town's response is coercive, if you can't get to an agreement, that's, and I'm not talking about enforcing an easement.
This is what we're dealing with, with the owner, saying, well, if I shut it down now, then the town may not have recourse in the future...
Right.
...for accessing the property, because maybe they won't have the ability to, to claim it as...
Adverse possession?
Adverse possession.
Yeah, that's exactly right, that's why you don't let people do that, because they come in and try to steal it from them.
The challenge with that is, it's been used for more than enough years to push that issue now. Plenty before this owner owned the property, the town has been using this property...
Right.
For, through the previous owners, and actually through the previous owner's owner.
So the lesson then, Dick, is, so if you let the public in this town use your property for long enough, expect the town to come in and confiscate it?
No, the, the lesson is, hey, if it's for the public good, and you own a piece of property that, that they want to build a memorial to World War II veterans on, and you don't have a problem with that, then there should also be not a problem with people being able to use the property to access the Griss Mill and to prevent accidents from happening at the Griss Mill, which is where we're going...
Yeah, keep going.
Okay?
Keep going.
So, in, instead of saying that this is a complicated issue, it's not. The town has been using this property, it started as a, as town beach.
I know the background, but...
Right, and, and that turnaround has been there for 100 years.
Yeah.
And it has looked the same, and people have used it the same.
Did the property owner get permission for the veterans memorial to be constructed there?
Yes, and the conservation approved it.
Do you have, do you have a written, a written statement from him, or was it verbal?
That would, that would have to go through the conservation's approval of it?
No, no, the property owner, I asked you, did the property owner approve it?
So this is not, this is not my memorial, it's an Eagle Scout project.
Yeah, you facilitated it, didn't you, Dick?
No, I, I gave the okay, from the Griss Mill standpoint, that a memorial sounds like a great idea.
I'm just curious, did the Boy Scouts know that they were putting that memorial on private property?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I don't think anybody knew, I didn't know that that was private property.
So let's get that clear, if we, if the public has used a piece of property so long that everybody doesn't even remember whose it is.
Correct, because if they didn't know whose...
And it wasn't, I was surprised to find out it was private property too.
Right.
So let, let Mark chime in here.
Mark. So let's just clarify here, there's legal terms being thrown around, there's very technical components for adverse possession if it applies. A municipality can exercise, or is eligible to exercise adverse possession, however, it is not the same as the general public going in and out of property. That is not a basis. In fact, aside from the fact I'm familiar with, I reviewed the law for this, we dealt with this issue years ago, when there was an attempt to stop Woodcliff Hills from being built as a subdivision, and they tried to convince the town, being the select board, to pursue litigation based on the roadways or trails that went in there and the public's use thereof. In order for adverse possession to be brought by a municipality, there has to be a showing that the municipality has actually exercised its own powers, in terms of its function, so that you construct something there, or you regularly maintain, not an occasional type of thing. The public at large is not the same as the municipality, and it's difficult, if not impossible, to prove a claim on the part of the public at large, and in fact, they formed a group called the Friends of Midfield Forests and Trails, to try to stop Woodcliff Hills, as I indicated, on the basis of it was going to deprive them of the use for years of the trails into there to go further onto the trustees' property, and that case was thrown out of court, so.
So I would add to your comments, consent destroys adverse possession as well.
That's correct, that's why the...
We had a, we had a neighbor at LaSalle Village that tried to, he was a... We had a neighbor at LaSalle Village that tried to, he was a partner at Min's Levin, and he didn't want the road to go out next to his home, so he tried to claim it by adverse possession. And we were able to document that the prior owner of the property got consent from the college to-
It's against the claims and the rights of the party. So, if the owner says, "Fine, use it, go ahead," then-
Here, it sounds like the owner was just allowing people to use it so that there's nothing adverse. He's just consented to have it happen.
These owners lived there for less than 10 years, right?
Well, you tack it on. You can tack it on.
I said, "Somebody here wants to speak, they have another chance."
Hi, so my name is Leila Houshman. I have lived on Gris Mill, I live at eight Gris Mill, which means that Tom Courtney is to the left of me, I'm in the middle, and then the Bee Gees are on the right. We are the only, on Gris Mill, we're the only direct butters. Tom Courtney and his wife Julia moved in in 2018. I've lived there since 1998. I'm here to tell you, I've moved four children through the public school system. Do kids occasionally walk there and drink? Sure, of course, but it was never a major issue. Do people leave trash sometimes? Sure. I also was aware of what happened that evening because I saw lights flashing down at the pond, which I never see, and I saw lights flashing, because I can see through to the railroad track. And I wasn't comfortable with it, and my dogs were barking because the lights were down there, and I called the police. And they said it was not a safety issue, they were looking for two kids who had kind of left their home, were running around and causing issues. But they weren't down at the pond drinking. So, from my standpoint, I just feel that perhaps Tom just isn't comfortable with people being on the property. Let me also say that about maybe two-ish years ago, he and his wife had a land surveyor show them where their actual property lines were, why they weren't quite sure, I don't know. And we were surprised to find out that the hill, down the hill of my property, what I thought was my property, the very lower part of the hill, is actually his property. So, when that memorial went in, which was perhaps, he's been there for six years, only six years, perhaps that memorial went in while he was there, I don't even think he realized that was his property. Ralph wanted everyone, we happen to have actual footage, because we're in the middle, but he wanted everyone that he was selling those three houses to and Preservation Way to feel like they had a little piece of that pond. So, he took what was originally part of our property, which we hadn't owned it yet, and kind of spit out this little spot onto the pond line or whatever. And so, that's what the Cortneys now own, the Roddys owned it for years. They were very different people and very mellow about people using it to access the pond and things like that. I don't personally feel that there's a major safety issue down there, but I think he would very much like to not have people there. He talked about being able to open and close the gate at dawn and dusk. If there's a way to automate it, maybe. He's not there a lot. He's retired, he has a second home. I'm there a lot. I know how little he's there. So, you know, the practicality of that, I don't really see him opening and closing the gate on a daily basis. You know, I'm not for the gate, or whatever it means, but I just wanted to clarify a few things, because I've lived there a long time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian, Donna, 92 Green Street, in case you guys don't know. I just want to offer a, maybe a little different perspective. I have, as I walked in waiting, I just noticed a map out there from Medfield from 1859, I think. And the Gris Mill's on there, obviously, it's been around since the 1700s, as Mr. Judge told me earlier. So, when you look at the map, there is, you know, there's the 27, which took a different route back then, but it passes past or by Gris Mill, and there's a little, you know, the spur that goes in there. So, it is not hard to imagine that that turnaround has been in use for hundreds of years and not 50, because carriages couldn't easily turn around, they didn't come with a reverse gear, so the horses or cattle, whatever, pulled their carts in there with the grains to get it processed. They had to turn around. So, I think there were mistakes made in the past when, you know, the town acquired the Gris Mill, that that piece was left out, because it shouldn't really be part of that. Guessing what the motives are of the landowner, and why he's starting that now, and whether he's gonna, you know, allow access in the future or not, I think is moot. We don't really know what those motives are. I think by the same right, we could assume that he is just taking baby steps now because he realizes that, you know, it would be harder to do more right now, but he wants to do more in the future in terms of restricting access and doing things with that parcel. We don't know that. So, I'm just suggesting here that we think about ways to correct that, and correct the mistakes that were made in the past. Could the town attempt to acquire that piece? Is all I'm saying. Either through whatever mechanism we have available, it's not a big, if you have looked at the plot plan, it's actually kind of really weird, because as-
Leila.
Leila just explained, you know, it was sort of like carved out after the fact, but if you look at it, it's a long piece and like a tongue that is at the very end of that piece of land, which kind of, it's not a natural, you know, part of the property. It's kind of like an add-on, an appendix, that gives the owner's access of the pond, a pond frontage, which they have through the easement, you know, on the other parcels as well. So, I would argue that this is of probably limited value to the landowner, given all the hassles that he has to go through now with this, and maybe he would be amenable to an acquisition of some sort by the town. That's all I wanted to say. Because it is so important, through the community.
Can I just add one thing at this point? No one knows for sure yet exactly where that gate is, whether it's on the conservation easement as discussed before, or whether it's not even on the conservation easement, and it's on a part of his private property that's not conservation easement. So, I just think that people really need to look at the documents and to get a plan and try to get an understanding. And I think you're right, that he may be really open to some conversation, because the fact of the matter is, this was triggered when, you know, four to six inches of gravel were dumped on his property without any knowledge. And so, you know, for people to be accusing him and blaming him, you know, and characterizing his behavior, when he's reacting to something that he didn't, you know, invasion of his property, I think that there's a way that there'd be a meeting of the minds. He seemed very reasonable when he was at Concombe, and very open to having conversation. And I think rather than attack, that if we had more conversation, that could be a good result.
We're not attacking. I don't want anyone to be under perception of attacking.
I think you're reinforcing my thought. This is, we're treating it like a legal and a coercive thing, when in fact, I haven't really seen clear evidence that he's either trying to incrementally take over things or anything. He just doesn't want something that some people seem to think didn't happen, but he's got a right not to want to have people doing stuff late at night on his property. And as far as what I've heard, at least, he's willing to let it continue to be used as a turnaround. So, it's not like he's-
He said that distinctly.
Yeah. There's a less confrontational way to a solution here.
It can be used when there's a lock gate.
Well, you're not supposed to be there at night. So, that's, he doesn't want people there at night.
The gate will be locked during the day. I bet real money with you that it will be locked all the time. There's no doubt in my-
Correct. I think he offered to give you the-
Whatever he offered, I'm just saying.
Guys, guys, guys.
You should not have sued.
One sec, one sec, please. Christian, I don't want, we're trying to have an easygoing dialogue. I don't want that going back.
Okay. To keep the easygoing dialogue going, the offer was that if the Gris Mill Committee wanted to open it up every morning and close it every evening, they could have a key. So, the Gris Mill group are volunteers.
Right.
We have regular jobs like everyone else, and we volunteer our time to bring a piece of history not only back to life, but for Medfield to be proud of it, and for everyone to use. I get my satisfaction and my payment when people use the property. I want more and more people to come down and see what a beautiful slice of paradise this really is. And ultimately, I got a wonderful compliment when the senator and the state rep were on the property. I asked, "Has anyone ever been inside the Gris Mill in this group?" And two of the younger aides raised their hand. And I said, "How is that?" And they said, "Well, we grew up in Medfield, and we took the third grade tour." And that's why Medfield was given $35,000 toward historical properties, because we brought it up with our boss.
$50,000.
$50,000, thank you. Every penny counts. And so, what we have here is, perhaps it's not a national treasure, but it certainly is a town treasure. And we should go out of our way to protect the ability for anyone in Medfield who wants to visit this property and visit the memorial from being able to do that. So, if that means negotiating with the owner, fine. If that means working out a reasonable solution, fine. But I'm not going to go back and forth with conservation who is saying, "Well, we just approve on this narrow degree of Wetlands Protection Act." Conservation was built on the idea that for preserving land for people to use for passive recreation, because it was all being-
Actually not. Conservation was preserving land, not just having things for people to use. It was to preserve the environment.
The first powers given to the conservation commissions in the Conservation Commission Act focused on promotion and development of natural resources.
Yes.
And the protection of watershed resources. Under these powers, the commissions undertake planning, acquiring, and managing open space, and encouraging the monitoring, conservation, and agricultural preservation restrictions. So, the conservation has a much greater, or should have looked at, a much greater broad view of this property as a public good than simply as a watershed, a watershed or a safe, the Wetlands Protection Act. This is all they focus on.
You're suggesting conservation should basically be able to take land under a certain-
Not at all. Not at all. But conservation has, I feel, the duty to oversee, making sure that wild land stays wild, or passive recreation land stays available for passive recreation.
Regardless of who owns it?
No, absolutely who owns it. Because they've been overseeing conservation property that was owned by different people. Most of the lands they oversee is owned by different people. Right?
No, they're, I mean-
You own conservation land all around every pond.
They're trying to protect the environment. They have certain regulations that, in other words, people can't cut trees down in a buffer zone without, so there's some of that. I agree.
What I'm saying is, they have broader powers than just enforcing a Wetlands Protection Act, which is extremely narrow. Their powers and their original creation was to protect lands so people could enjoy them. And here we have a situation where this, nothing says "closed" to the public more than a locking gate.
Especially on private property. That usually sends that message, Joe.
Right. But the private property, Gus, and you need to understand, there are three different easements on that property.
Any legal things on easements, I defer to that. Yeah, I agree.
Right, right. So, it's private property, absolutely. But it's the use of that private property by these easements that have been created to protect the open space, frankly, for the neighbors.
Well, and that's what I have a question for right now, because I definitely want to get this meeting back on track, because we've got a lot, we still have an executive session after this. But for the neighbor, your easement right now from Preservation Way, you have the right to go through that area to where the turnaround is, correct? Does your-
I have a trail easement.
Trail.
The trail.
It's a walking, it's a pedestrian trail easement.
It's not the same thing.
It's not the same thing. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if he was to put-
And that's why I said, I wasn't sure exactly how it works, but I'm wary of a gate and having, depending on how it works going around it, I've seen how poison ivy grows up around there, like then-
The town has a water main and a sewer main, separate sewer main. So, there's a water easement and a sewer easement. We'd have access to maintain those. There's a private drainage easement that handles the whole subdivision, I guess, that goes from the upper hill down.
So, in theory, a gate would not prevent us from gaining access. We would just have to-
No, they, well, we don't know, as was said, we're not exactly sure where the gate is going to be. They can't put the gate across a water or sewer easement.
Okay, okay.
Again, it has nothing to do with the public coming in, recreating. It has to do with us being able to go in to maintain our water and sewer easement.
So, can I just ask the question that I-
Mark, when I walked around that pond from the Gris Mill, I was curious to walk around Kingsbury Pond, but I very quickly, beyond the homeowner here that we're talking about, came upon a no trespassing sign. So, I just turned around, and it was clear to me that the homeowners didn't want people coming across whatever easement was there. And as I read the easements now, the easements don't run to me as a Medfield resident, they run to the other residents' development.
I'm in Preservation, too.
Do you mind dropping to open the mic, just so, you'd be amazed how many people ping when you guys start to talk and they can't hear.
Hi. My name's Lisa Nichols, and I'm also on Preservation. I'm on number six Preservation, right next to the Hillamires. I have three daughters, so when this came about, it did kind of make me sad, just because I, for the girls' grade, like that personally, the friends I'm with, they have a lot of hockey, there's a lot of hockey players. There's a lot, like, all winter long, I see people fishing and ice skating, you know, practicing or whatever it is, but it's utilized a lot. And then to hear, you know, my neighbors' kids also, like, and I see them, as they were growing up, they were cutting through, they were riding their bike, and that was something that I would really truly love for my own girls, because we don't have a sidewalk. And it's just this little short part of 27, "We don't have a sidewalk," by the way. Hint, hint.
Julie noted.
Just a little section, greatly appreciated. But riding down the back, and I've done that in the past, people honk, people like literally ride up to you, which I think is very inappropriate. And that easement, to us, that's valuable. And if we're a part of the deed and we have access to that easement, the gate just does not, it feels like our privilege is also being taken away. Like, our right to be able to use it by relying on somebody else. And sure, if we get a key, fine, but who, like, I'm going to just give keys to my own daughters and be like, "Here you go," and don't, you know, I don't, this gate that's 15 feet high, which seems, is that 15?
50 feet wide.
Okay. Somewhere I saw "high," I'm like, "What? That's a really big gate."
It's a single bar that would stop a vehicle, but a kid could go through it, no problem.
Going through that gate and the Preservation Trail actually doesn't know where the gate is.
Right. It's that close to the water.
Okay. So, it's just, whatever, I guess my whole point of it is, is that we've lived here for 10 years, we've lived at that house for about, I think we're going on to six years possibly. But I go down and up and watch it all the time, and it just kind of, when I heard about it, which also I didn't even hear about till like just recently, it made me sad. And when we sent out our little neighborhood text chain, it blew up. It blew up. And I guarantee it, more neighbors would be here, except the timing of everything, one's on the Cape, one's in Portugal, you know, otherwise they would be here. So, that's where.
So, just to clarify, these easements all have a place, they're shown, they're on record at the registry, and they have a specific location, including the trail easement. It's not, you can walk across the property anywhere you want, you have to stay within the confines of where that trail easement was laid up. So, wherever the gates go, and they cannot put the gate across the trail easement, they cannot put it across a water or sewer main easement, but land that's not affected and it's not subject to jurisdiction, although there is language in the conservation easement prohibiting permanent structures.
So, that's where I want to go back, because I raise this specifically to ask, who in town- town is responsible for this? I don't think Concom is, okay? So I never thought you had to make this decision. I'm just trying to get in front of the town that this is real language in agreement, a Conservation easement that existed when that property owner bought that house. So those restrictions on that property were there when he bought it. We're not taking things away, we're asking, how does this get enforced, not just for that owner, but for the other owners who are impacted by this? And I don't have the answer. I'm not a surveyor, but I'm, I was coming here to ask the town, before this gets built, to just pump the brakes a little bit, or pump the gate, whatever, you know, and find out before we put a permanent structure up, who should say yes? And that's all I was trying to say.
I know, I hear you, because the thing that I'm conscious about in this town, and my younger brother's a real estate attorney, is when you put a deed on a piece of land, you just can't brush that aside. The deed is a deed is a deed, and so many people will pull things, and they're like, oh, I didn't know I had it. Well, when you close any home, all that paperwork was there.
So I was a little caught off guard that I was getting attacked for taking personal, I don't want to take his property, but if he knowingly bought a piece of property that had restrictions on it, he's responsible to know what those restrictions are, and we as a town should know. And if I'm wrong, and this is...
Jerry, which restriction are you referring to?
Would it be helpful, I just, I know you're trying to move this forward, but Maria has the easements. Would it be helpful for you to see them on the screen so that you know what you're talking about, where the proposed gate is versus the easements?
And then what the deed applies to.
That no buildings, sign, utility pole, or other temporary or permanent structure.
Well, that's coming up. Let me just respond to a point here, because...
Yeah, if you want to tell them the Frank, and you can get them up.
Jerry, your question, if the easement, and I read this, I read the restriction, if a structure is a gate, sometimes I don't know legally whether a structure is a building, but leaving that aside, let's assume that the Select Board has care, custody, and control over the property that we own and has an interest in overseeing the easement, and the easement has a restriction against a gate. I can see us basically getting in touch with the homeowner and saying, listen, you can't put up a gate because there's this easement, so you can't do it, not on Concom grounds, but on the easement grounds if we have care, custody, and control. I'd see doing that. If we do that, I'm suggesting that the Kingsbury Gristmill still has an issue. You want to, you know, you were saying, who's going to negotiate? And the short answer is, he's your neighbor. If it's impossible, and there's people here, I appreciate the folks from Preservation Way and all the people that are part of this, that you feel the way you do, I'm glad to see that, but I don't think, I don't think this is an issue that needs to be resolved through some sort of, actually, a conversation in absentia.
Don't confuse our passion with aggression or something else, right?
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying you're throwing it here, and you should be dealing with it.
We are passionate about the history in Medfield and the preservation of being able to visit the gristmill unabated and allowed to be able to use a piece of property.
That's wonderful. All the more reason you should be working absolutely hard to maintain good relationships with your neighbors. So if he has an issue, you're the ones that should be reaching out and going, listen, we're your neighbors, we understand the issue, you can't have a gate.
So until you know the history of that, because you've only heard the history from Conservation, the reality is, we have been reaching out. Not only have we been reaching out, I personally have reached out, and I purchased a sign saying closed, dawn to dusk.
I did notice that.
Asked the owner if I could put it up, because I was privy to his concerns about this property. I asked him if a chain, you know, on a hook might help.
Where's the chain there? I noticed.
Yeah, I put it there.
Is that where the gate's going to go, where the chain is?
You know what you should be doing, Dick. I didn't know, I didn't know you were the one did it.
All right, so...
Dick, is that where the, where the gates, Dick, is that where the gate's going to go?
I think in that area.
There are two flags.
There are two flags are...
And then there's a chain that's on the ground today.
The gate, the gate company put flags in.
Okay, all right, so I know where the gate's going to go, then.
Yeah.
I had, by the way, I had no problem turning around, going in and out, and I didn't have to go around the circle, like...
Right.
But I'm looking at what the homeowner has sent, I think this is his drawing, it's all on the side, so it's a little hard to read in our material, but he says that he offered you a key.
Correct, but the offer was...
Why doesn't that solve this?
So the offer was contingent on the gristmill committee...
Locking it, yeah.
Opening it in the morning, every morning, he said, not opening it every morning...
Well, I think you're, I don't think...
And locking it, no, this, because I need you to understand that the contingency, it's not just, you can have a key, that solves your problem with access. It's, you need to open it, you can have a key if you open it every morning...
That's not realistic.
And lock it every night, and he looked at the committee, and we agreed as a committee, that was, one, impossible, because we donate our time and we're, we are just helping out.
I'll just read you what he said here. "We have also offered keys to the Kingsbury Pond Gristmill Committee via Dick Judge, with the understanding that they would need to ensure that the gate is locked each evening."
And that's not realistic.
They don't say that you have to open it, they just want you to make sure it's closed.
You don't want to lock it twice, right? So it needs to be opened in order to be locked. So the idea is, yes, those are the contingencies. Do you want a key? You need to open it every morning and close it every night.
Well, you don't have to open it every morning, it's only, open it if you want the turnaround available.
Pete, these are his words.
Oh, I just read you his words.
His verbal words to us are slightly different than those.
Okay.
But not, but not too much, Pete, because it says, open it.
Dick, but his issue, if what we've heard is correct, it's not, I want a gate, his issue is, I don't want people going on the property at night. If you focus on what the real issue is, if there's another solution to address that real issue, it's not like I just have a burning desire to spend $3,000 on a gate.
We've asked, we've asked for increased policing, we've asked for, I deputized so many people up there that are good people, that go there, go there every day, go there a couple times a week.
No deputizing.
No deputizing.
So, because we, we are... I would like to address the easement that's up on the screen right there. So what are we looking at here?
I think you're going to have to come up and...
Yeah.
Don't forget the microphone.
So, and Debbie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this, everything over here is the Conservation and Open Space easement that is to remain private. Then you have overlapping, you have the 20-foot-wide permanent sewer easement, and then you also have a drainage easement that goes all the way to the property. So the RDA for post-fence location that I saw was roughly around this area. It wasn't blocking any of these smaller easements, is that correct?
That's what they were proposing.
That is what is going on in this plan. And then for each of these, like, obviously a open page document where you can find the actual restriction items for each easement.
So for, so what you're looking at up there, Maria, and for the residents on Preservation Way, do they, they're not going to be impeded whatsoever to continue the trail that the kids used to get from where they are up to, whether it be Wheelock or up to Metacomic Park, is that...
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is, if the gate, if the gate is here, then you would still have everywhere else on the easement to use, but the easement terms I looked up, it does seem to prohibit any permanent structures, but it doesn't prohibit access through it, but permanent structure is prohibited.
Right.
Okay.
So that is how it is.
That, to me, is a sensitive point. Like, if a deed says you can't do the following, can't do the following. Like, we're setting a precedent, it says, by the way, that attic that you're supposed to leave as an attic, wink, wink, like, the deed says you can't do anything with it, but then people start changing. It means our planning board has got no...
If you do that, on the other hand, a landowner has a right to address an issue that they have. That may not be the way to address it.
Well, but they have the right to make changes on the land that a deed allows them to make. But if a deed restricts what an owner can do to their land, I'd be, I'd be passionate to say, I'm not going to let, I'm not going to turn a blind eye to not making sure that we adhere to what a deed does, because a deed was written for a reason, back when it was officially issued, and for us to not actually address that now, we're setting a really bad precedent in this town.
On the other hand, if you're, I agree with what you just said. On the other hand, if I'm a landowner and I have some kid that goes and does go drinking on my property and crashes into a tree and gets hurt, it ain't the town that's going to get sued, it's going to be me, it's the landowner. So there's a legitimate issue that, I think there's a legitimate issue the landowner has. It may, from what we're saying here, it sounds like there's a good chance putting a gate up is not a legal solution to that legitimate issue.
Well, and if it violates the deed, there's no option to put a structure up. And if you're actually installing something in, that's a permanent structure, you just can't take it out at night, then I would say that is a permanent structure violating the deed.
You could put no trespassing.
We can't do it, you know, he cannot do it unilaterally. The prohibition's in the, is in the Conservation easement. That's a prohibited use, so he can't do it unilaterally. We are the beneficiaries, we hold that, we could work something out with it, we have flexibility. He just can't do it unilaterally.
And I'm not opposed, so we certainly should have a discussion, right? That's something we can go offline with.
So he has to have the approval of the other property owners who have that written into their deed as well?
No, no.
When you say unilaterally, meaning?
Between, the condition, the original developer, on behalf of everybody who was going to come, the private owners that were going to come afterwards, entered into a Conservation easement with the town, for the benefit of the town. So there was a whole bunch of prohibitions that the town, that run to the town, the town has the right to enforce, including activities and structures that are not permitted. So a permanent structure, by the terms of the Conservation easement, is prohibited, the town has the right to enforce it. Oh, by the way, there's reciprocal enforcement in here, so if we did something we shouldn't do, he has a right to make an issue of that.
Right.
And I understand, like, I've heard multiple times here tonight about the gravel being put down or whatever. Nothing was intended there, and we've been, and the town has been maintaining that land for well over 50 years. Trucks have come in and out of there and cleaned it up. So that was a, that was a overly aggressive treatment, but not something that hasn't been done in the past, so that is, that's a one-off. And that's, again, that's why discussion should be had with the owner to kind of sort this all out. But I want to, Christine, I think you already shoot me if we don't put an end to some of this conversation here, knowing we've got more to go, so...
Can I just say one more thing? It would be wonderful if we could work this out in a name-only manner.
Yes.
And I don't really like to air dirty laundry, but three years ago, or maybe two years ago, I mentioned that he and his wife realized that they owned a different part of the land that I thought I had owned, which, as a courtesy, I, anyway, we'd just been mowing the whole hill. He literally owns half of the hill, and I own half of the hill. It's a very odd property line. When they realized that, I was trying to be neighborly, and I was like, well, if we can just keep mowing it, and they were adamant, no. And then by accident, two times, my lawn mowers, who've been, like, the guys are great, they've been doing it for 25 years at that point, and then they aerated it that same week, he was not happy. He wrote rude emails to myself and my husband, he threatened to sue my landscaper. He may come across like a sweetie-pedi when he wants something, if it's on, I don't really care if it's on Zoom, but when he doesn't get what he wants, it's not like that. And I really, he didn't have to handle it that way. And it was, I was appalled, I was pissed, but I held my tongue. I'm not holding my tongue here. Okay? That's that.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? I'd like to at least close my piece out of this, if possible. The reason I came here last week was because I thought this was an issue that should be in front of the Select Board. The fact that the Conservation Commission said, we don't see a problem with these two sections, the questions that you asked us, we can answer in the negative, that should not control what happens without the input from the Select Board. Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to accomplish.
Thank you.
Keep it close.
I just want to give you folks just a heads up, because when it comes back, which could, because, because there was an appeal filed, a DEP, they looked a little more closely at the negative determination of applicability that was issued, and they recognized that there was a violation that occurred and that it was filling by the dumping of the gravel up there, so they have asked us what we as a commission intend to do about the violation. So there will be, you know, a follow-up meeting with the commission, and it will address that issue, and we have no other recourse but to do that, and we will handle it as we handle any other violation. But just so you know, that, that has sort of triggered this response. And just so everyone does know, is that DEP oversees everything that Concom does. If they don't like what Concom does, then they can override what Concom does. So we work really hard to meet the standards that the state expects of us to do that, and when we're doing that, we're just, we're just trying to do our best job. So I hope people understand that. As a final thought, no one knows yet where this gate is and whether it's even on that Conservation restriction, so when you find out, that's going to be a really helpful piece.
So I think what I heard here tonight is there's two flags in the ground that were put there by the fence company, so I think it's pretty...
So now, I'm, right, but...
So I think it's safe to say that we don't have to...
No, no, you're right.
Put off, it's there, and when you can go eyeball it, and you know the problem.
Now you just need to know if it's on the Conservation restriction. And then again, I think that everyone needs to really look carefully at the language in the Conservation restriction, because I'm not so sure that it just says you can't put, like, a gate or a fence, it says, you know, accessory to a residential structure, so...
So, I don't want to debate this anymore.
I know, I know, I'm just saying that...
I think we've given it a lot of air, I appreciate you coming, you gave a lot of great info, Deb.
I'll just close it out by saying, so Conservation Commission is out of the picture. This is now, I believe, in, with the town's decision in regards to the deeded deed and the restrictions that were in the deed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming, appreciate it.
I think, I think you have somebody online.
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, yeah, sorry, Chris, if you're still there. Can you...
Chris, can you promote Chris with me?
Sorry, Chris.
So while you're promoting Chris, let me just say that I guess I'm, it doesn't appeal to me to take away someone's freedom to use their property the way they want to, so that's, I start with that sort of basis of my thinking. I'm not at all clear that this gate is within a Conservation easement area. The map is not at all clear to me, and, and the taking is actually, I look at the plan of the taking, and that's not at all clear to me either. And I'm not sure that the language that Jerry Potts was suggesting to us, gives us as a town power, gives us power, because it has to be accessory to a dwelling unit, and I'm not sure that a gate is accessory to the residential unit, and I'm not sure that it's...
No.
...perpetually construed, permitted to remain in the easement area. So, yeah, I'm just not sure that it's in the easement area.
But if, but if it's deeded to not be done...
It's not deeded, it's an easement. It's a Conservation easement.
It's in the deed, it's in the deed.
It's in the deed.
No, it's not, it's not in the deed, it's a Conservation easement.
It's reference, it's reference.
All right, all right, timeout, timeout, guys, guys, Chris, are you on?
I'm on.
Okay. But can you turn that up a little bit louder? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I was struggling.
I just wanted to make sure, very, very fast, quick points. In 1990, August 1994, Homeowners Association was established by Ralph Costello, so all the people that live over on Gristmill Road and also on Preservation Way are all officially, were all officially members of that Homeowners Association. So I had the question of, you know, kind of to Mark's point, Town Council's point about not being able to act unilaterally, I did question whether or not the association, the Homeowners Association, that was established, could have been the one filing with the Conservation Commission and not Mr. Portman, because of that was set up. Now, it was interesting to see in the Globe that those Homeowners Associations expire after 30 years, but after, since the paperwork was filed in July, that Homeowners Association was still in place. And, you know, and it's also very telling to hear all these neighbors saying they knew nothing about this. So when you're talking about having a good relationship with your neighbors, the fact that all these people who live right there had no idea that this was in the works is not really a neighborly thing to do. And then the second thing is that a gate is, a gate's still not going to stop anybody from hanging out at the pond and partying. You know, it's going to, it'll stop a vehicle, but it won't stop people from walking through there late at night to hang out at the pond. So, you know, I don't know if he's going to really reach his objective by, or think he's going to reach his objective by putting this gate in, because it's just not going to stop pedestrians late at night from going back there and partying. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. All right, we're good. All right, so, moving on to the dog...
I'm actually, can we hold that for one second? You guys are killing me tonight. We actually have, if we could move our action item, we have members of the Board of Health who have been here for many hours.
All right.
Steve still here?
Steve is now home on Zoom.
Okay.
If we could just take up the Charles River Public Health District, I would appreciate that.
All right, so we're going to jump over to the items and go to vote to sign the[1791.86]
So we're going to jump over to the items and go to vote to sign the Charles River Public Health District Intermunicipal Agreement.
Here somewhere?
For the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant. You never know what you're stepping into when you come to these meetings, all right?
Well, how many years?
Yeah.
All right. There we go. He's driving for you.
Good evening. I have, I'm Carrie Dinnell, the Program Manager for the Charles River Shared Services Arrangement of Public Health District. I had the pleasure of being here with you all, I think, the night you were sworn in as Chair. I'm glad to be back here now. You have in your packet the intermunicipal agreement and that includes the details of the contract that the host agency, which is the Town of Needham, signs on behalf of this arrangement and the obligations that are through the contract. And you, I think, had opportunity to review all the provisions of the agreement. The agreement's been reviewed by Town Council. That was a requirement for each town. So, yes, thank you.
I can't even remember when I did it.
Oh, boy. It was back in June, I think. Yeah. So I have just a brief presentation, which I can run through. Next slide. So briefly, just to remind everybody, why do we want to do shared services? And why do we need an intermunicipal agreement? The purpose of this is to try and develop and implement a program that elevates the practice of public health in all of the communities that participate in the collaborative. So that's Dover, Sherborne, Medfield, and Needham. I say it in a different order every time. And, you know, the reasoning for it is to, is that we've always known that because of home rule and because of the variable levels of funding, that every community in the state has different levels and practices of public health. COVID laid that bare, like so many, it laid bare so many other things. And we had the opportunity and were able to obtain funding through the legislature to try and support development of these shared services arrangements. Next slide, please. So this is a sort of a combination logic model and org chart. And it just lays out, I'm trying to get it so that all of the information, as much of the information about the program is available on one page and we can move into kind of more detailed questions. So you see the participants at the top. You see the green, which represents the funding. We have guaranteed funding for $325,000 for this current fiscal year and the next two. You see in the blue dot in the center there, the stipulations about sort of what do we do? We, there's one vote per community and the collaborative determine that a quorum has to be someone from each of the communities and, excuse me, and that all votes need to be unanimous. Then you see the staffing on the left-hand side. Those are the inputs you can see. So that includes myself and then other members of our team. I'm pleased to say that we're close to hiring, I think, a regional public health nurse who will be a thread that pulls together the public health nursing capacity for each community. And help coordinate some of that, work with folks. And then on the bottom right are the deliverables. You know, the work that's required by the contract that we have with the state that goes along with the funding because we never get funding without things we have to do, right? The work plan was developed with the Advisory Board, members from all communities. And next slide, please. So, you know, how does it work? The Advisory Board is the governing body. Professional staff, myself and other folks on the team are, you know, providing recommendations, developing proposals for budget work plan, et cetera, taking guidance and feedback from the board. We have to make sure that the expenditures and the activities all meet all four of those tests. So it has to be, whatever we pay for or do needs to in some way be moving us, all four communities forward in improving status on public health performance standards. It needs to benefit all four communities. It needs to be agreed upon by all four communities. And then, last but not least, it needs to meet the DPH allowable cost requirements, which are part of our work plan. And the Advisory Board meets monthly. And we have just, actually, we're having our first environmental health work group meeting tomorrow. We think that adding work groups will be a nice way to get some operational discussions happening and then that the work groups can feed up to the Advisory Board with suggestions. Next slide, please. This is just sort of a sample listing of the things that shared services can do. This is, you know, I share this with all the communities. It's, you know, we're able to augment environmental health capacity. We have a regional environmental health inspector who's available to conduct inspections, support if there's a big food festival, for example, or if there were a power outage and needed to be a number of establishments visited quickly. We can also support existing public health nursing capacity. We're actually engaged in that at this time. The shared services folks have taken on infectious disease tracking responsibilities for the Town of Medfield currently. And I've actually been communicating with Christine about the purchase of, or sorry, not the purchase, the order of pre-COVID test kits and sort of talking about strategies of how to distribute those. We also, you know, in addition to those kind of operational things, where staff would be providing needs assessment and data gathering, we're trying to, again, elevate the practice so that it's not simply operational. It's strategic. It's looking at what are the community profiles? What are the needs? What are the opportunities for future grants? Or where ought programs be focused on? What are the specific needs of the population? And then we can also provide funds to reimburse the town for professional training and professional development association dues and the like, if that's something that the town is not able to fund themselves. And that goes with the idea that this is, this elevation of public health practice. One of the things that is so important about it is the ability to communicate with the other folks who are practicing it. One of the things that the business community always is a little frustrated about is that you're not necessarily going to get the same inspection in every community. And by working across, by participating with your colleagues across that, the town boundaries, that's one of the ways of breaking that down. Next slide. So briefly, the agreement itself, it's a pretty, well, someone described it as a very long and detailed prenuptial agreement, which I think is pretty reasonable. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a standard agreement under the purview of Chapter 40호 A, which says towns or other municipal bodies can enter into agreements. And the agreement itself was drafted, there was a common document that was drafted by the Mass Association of Health Boards and then shared with all, there are currently 51 shared service arrangements in Massachusetts. It was shared with all of them. There are 50 other people like me trying to get this to happen.
It's actually gone to numerous iterations. And it's been tremendously improved from what was originally put out there.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you for your contributions on that. Yes, I think the initial draft was, you know, capturing the concepts of what wanted to happen. And there's been a lot of cleaned up work to make it, make it suitable for municipalities to adopt. So this is kind of like mutual aid. Everybody has to agree to the same agreement. You know, I would used to say for mutual aid, it's not mutual if it's not the same agreement. So it's one agreement, the same agreement reviewed by all of the town councils.
We have several areas in place for other things, including our Veterans Services Officer and our Sealer of Ways and Measures. So they are familiar with the IMAs, so.
Right. Thank you. Reviewed by Needham Town Council first, just because Needham's the host community and has sort of more exposure than other communities. And, you know, it just lays out the rules and roles for what does the host community have to do? What are the responsibilities of each of the member communities? How's the Advisory Board going to work? What's our governance? In order to, I've been told by my project officer, in order to continue receiving funding beyond what we currently have on hand, we have to have this agreement approved. If we don't have an intermunicipal agreement in force, then it does put it in jeopardy for, you know, why would the Office of Local Regional Health be able to continue funding us? So it's kind of an important thing. Hopefully, we can just get it approved. And I think that's it. So I now would be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything. And I don't know if Town Council has some, if I missed something that he might want to highlight.
I'll just put it in context because I dealt with this in Franklin. And when I said iterations, the earliest iterations, when Franklin was presented with it was really terrible. But Cheryl Sabara, who's the attorney, too, got actively involved. And it turned out, we hadn't even been presented with the latest revision in Franklin at the time. So it's made huge strides. The biggest driver from my standpoint is, is the employment personnel component. Who's employees of whom? And who's going to have to provide benefits, that sort of thing. So that's been tightened up considerably. Everybody knows whose employees are whose and who's responsible for what benefits. And that's the big driver.
Pete, any questions?
My questions have to go with the money that's attached to it. I see that it says it's an amendment. It says current total engagement maximum and it's around just under $900,000.
Right.
And then there's a total maximum engagement of three and a half, about three and a half million. What, can you explain those numbers to me?
I can. So the contract is actually with the Town of Needham. Needham hosts both, hosts two programs. A training hub, which is kind of the opposite side of this. It would be providing training throughout 43 community group. And the funding, and then we also host the shared services arrangement. And Office of Local Regional Health, their contract with us is combined. It's the two pieces. So that's why you see the large annual amount. $549,000 per year is what's dedicated for the training hub. And then $325,000 per year is specific to shared services. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
It's multi-year funding?
It is, right. Say that, say that again. It says, it's incredibly, it's unusual. Typically, funding is year to year. And Office of Local Regional Health was able to make arrangements so that we have guaranteed funding over a period of three years, which is such a great luxury because the way you plan when you have multi-year funding is very different than if you just know you have one year. So, so we, this runs through June 30 of 2027. 27, is that right? 24, no, sorry, 26. Sorry, I count wrong. So current fiscal year through June 30, 2025, then 26, 27, 27.
24, 27, yes.
27. Thank you, Christine.
Any more questions?
And am I, are we responsible for a halftime equivalent trainer?
Nope. So the training piece that, again, so that that's actually a separate contractual arrangement and the shared, we're just concerned with the shared services function. So it's about four towns working together. We have a regional inspector who would be able to conduct inspections here in Medfield should there be a need. We will have that regional public health nurse who would be able to support a blood pressure clinic or maybe a vaccine clinic, you know, be able to contribute resources in that way. The training is, Needham as the host community hires the staff for both this shared services arrangement and then also for the training piece. Actually, if we go back, if we can go back on slide to that schematic.
We have the org chart.
Yeah.
I like to say this is the best arrangement for Medfield because Needham essentially does all of the work on this and we just get the benefit. Which is really the bottom line.
Right. So you can see here, so if you look at the schematic on the screen, that shows the staffing arrangement for shared services. The staff are all hired by the Town of Needham. As the host agency, Needham, as I said, you know, there's higher degree of exposure, higher degree of responsibility. Needham has said, yes, we will hire the folks. So they hired me, they hired our assistant manager. And, and we then, our charge is to serve this shared services arrangement. So we're working with each of the communities up the top, you see. So I talk to the Town of Needham, just like I talked to the Town of Medfield and say, what do you need and what are your priorities?
It's almost like a supplemental service to our existing Board of Health and our staff.
Nice, yes.
And could you just mention, we have the health assessment. I just brought that up in the past.
Oh, sure. So included in our deliverables, we have strategic planning this year. We're able to take advantage of some other funding that will support strategic planning. And the intent of that is to put us in position to then conduct a community health assessment that would be for the four communities. And we'd be able to identify what are the specific priorities, what, you know, and put in place from conducting a health assessment that would then put in place a community health improvement plan. That would be a collaborative plan, right? But it would, it would include the specific needs as appropriate for each of the communities. So we anticipate that we would do the community health assessment and then develop the health improvement plan in the next fiscal year. We'll do strategic planning this year, get our inventory system set up, move into being a real subject to open meeting law organization, finish our hiring, and then we'll move to that assessment piece. That's it.
Pete, you're good?
I'm good.
All right.
So Pete asked my first question. With his first question, so to answer that. The only other question I had is, every town has one vote, but I think it's also every town also has two representatives. So you don't have to explain the process. I'm just curious who the representatives are, unless it's the two of you. So it's the two of you?
No, it's our public health nurse and Kathy Thompson as well.
It's actually Steve Brech, but I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
This, I don't think it's written as the Board of Health Chair, but right now it is the Board of Health Chair.
Oh, okay.
As an alternate.
Yes, thanks, Carol. I'll be asking each town to formalize that.
To say we'd like to have a representative from every town at every meeting, but you can have two representatives. You need, you only need to have one of them show up.
Sometimes Steve goes and Carol goes.
I, I mean, I have said, I have said I'd like to have as many people as possible. But it doesn't matter whether you have one or five, you get one vote.
I'm good. I'm thrilled we've got this together. Happy we can move it forward.
Steve, Steve, did you want to say something?
Oh. I was just going to respond to Gus and say that because we took this cautious approach of having this requirement of a unanimous vote on any decisions we make as an advisory board, there was a concern that it would be hard to make progress if we only had one representative per town who could be present at these meetings for these unanimous votes. So the solution to that was to stay unanimous, but to have a sort of a hierarchical alternates for each town so that at any meeting, we can always have someone who can vote on behalf of the town at that meeting. So that was the logic of those.
Thanks, Steve. Makes sense to me. Ready?
I'm ready if you're ready.
All right. I move that we sign the Charles River Public Health District Intermunicipal Agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Shall we bounce back to the Dog Bylaw Review Committee? Next steps?
I think you can, yes.
I see that Jill is on. I actually put this on just to make sure we, now that we know that the AG has approved our town meeting vote to amend the dog control portion of our charter. Now it's kind of the next step is what do we want to see the dog control bylaws put on as we move into Town Meeting 2025? I also think too, and Jill, you can certainly chime in here if I'm speaking out of turn, but I also think we want to think about updating the webpage because we said at the town meeting that we would have on the webpage. meeting that we would have on the webpage, a place where people could go to see where dogs are allowed on, whether mandatory to be on leash, where we have off-leash areas. And I know one of the areas that we've talked about, but we have not actually formally addressed, is the circumference of the state hospital. So, we know right now the quad is a definite on-leash area. The north field is a off-leash area.
Although that hasn't, if we actually document, I agree, but if we document, we haven't actually posted any of the stuff.
That's what I'm saying, I go, I want to talk tonight to make sure we're going out, we've talked about the backfield at, at State Hospital, the backfield on the other side of the railroad tracks that we lock, right, to not the soccer fields, nothing on the front side of the railroad tracks, because the backside is the, is the homeless land where you can, you can see where everybody walks.
Is any of that on the well field?
No, I think the well field is a soccer field, right?
No, the well field's back by the, by the water treatment plant, yeah.
What, back by the, people don't tend to go off-leash there, it's on the other side of the railroad tracks is where you literally see, and then the base circuit trail brings people through the woods. And then, the, the area I was talking about, the state hospital's circumference, so if you were to get out of your car and go up cottage, and then go to the back, the dirt path, that brings you on either side of the building, so you're not in the quad.
Oh, we're back to the state hospital.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I didn't know what Jill said, everyone talks about, I said, let me go back to the state hospital, that started there, the.
Well, those are both state fields, though, right?
No, the dirt path, if you get out of your car at Stone Gate, you can have cottage, which goes right up to Belforge, or you can bear off to the right where the.
Just that outside.
The aquarium is.
The outside road.
Yeah, and it's a dirt, so I would say that would be off-leash, right, I mean, that's, a lot of people walk one off, you don't see a lot of dog packs there.
Right.
And then, literally, if you follow it, it then wraps you behind the building, and then you can go along the other side, and it brings you right back to cottage.
Yeah, I, I think that's how it's been, is the quad is the on-leash area, and everything else is off-leash.
Okay.
Could be talked, I mean, that's just how it's been, it could be talked out of that, but.
And Gene, you're not seeing many issues up there now with, when you're holding your functions, are people respecting keeping the dogs on leash for, I mean, it's not a perfect world, but.
Yeah, I've seen Jenny Cronin up there more than ever, and she's handing out a lot of educational information right now.
You know what, only because the fan's on, I can't hear what you just said, I'm sorry.
Jenny Cronin's been up there a lot.
Jenny, Jenny Cronin's been up there, I've seen her almost every day, and she's handing out a lot of educational information.
Oh, fantastic.
To all the dog walkers.
Okay, and those aren't being left behind as trash, and then people will say.
You might want to check with the chief, that's what she said she was going to do, as soon as she found out that it passed, she was going to start a campaign up there.
Yeah, that's why you see Jenny up there every day.
Oh, good, okay. Pete, do you have any comments on?
So, on, on the areas that you're talking about, can you just mark them on a plan for us, so we can see what you're talking about on a plan?
I can do that next meeting, I have no problem bringing that up, but it's, it's literally, if you know, if you know the field that we lock, there's a, there's a railroad track that goes right through the middle of it, and if you look at any GPS map, you'll see that people have walked a trail, it's literally just burnt right into the grass, that's where a lot of people walk their dogs today. And then, again, it's, it's, if, if you're familiar with just the state hospital property, there's a dirt path that wraps around the circumference of it, but I have no problem the next meeting just having some pictures laid out.
I think I know what you're talking about, but it'd be helpful to have.
Yeah, no problem.
And then we can label the agenda item, you know, discussion of off-leash areas, so that people are aware.
So that we can update the websites, if there's no questions asked.
I'll add that to the next agenda. Gus, you won't be here for the next meeting, are you okay with that? You're okay with this?
Where this is going, I think that's fine, the only, and I'm not familiar with the we lock area for dog walking, obviously, we don't want to put dogs on a well field.
No, so I, we'll, we'll work out some maps with Maria, and I just want to make sure that's not water and.
So, whether it's off, off-leash or on-leash, that people walk their dogs there now?
Well, that we have.
Water and sewer has some concerns about the lack of poop pickup, which is causing some issues. So, I want to, I just want to have Maria do some maps, and then make sure if that is water and sewer property, that we have a conversation, invite them in it to have that conversation as well.
It doesn't make sense to me that we would, we have a lot of land for dogs, so it doesn't make sense to me that, if we just said dogs are off the well field, I think that would be.
Yeah, yeah, we're not encouraging people to walk.
Yeah, so I just, we'll, we'll do a map and, and put it on the agenda for the first.
The land on the other side of the railroad tracks from the school, I know the back forested area is water and sewer land, I don't know about the field.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
It'll be a four-hundred-foot radius from the wellhead is primary, that, that's a total protection zone under D E P regs, four-hundred-foot radius from the wellhead point.
Okay.
All right, well, so we'll put that on the agenda for the first.
Jill, do you have any questions or comments? I see you on there.
She probably, she can't speak.
So, while she's coming up, I'll just share that I had emailed Jill and asked her to look into, well, I just shared with her that I found it unpleasant that the town was paying to pick up other people's dog poop, and could the committee look into a way of making the dog poopers pay, so.
And I take offense to that, because I never put a kid through the Medfield school system, and I think what I've paid for my taxes.
You shouldn't take offense at my feelings.
But I just, that's why when, that was brought up before, I think that, that fifteen thousand dollars for, coming out of taxpayer dollars for dogs, is chump change compared to how many people in this town don't take advantage of services that they pay towards, and we don't flinch. So, I mean, that's fine you say it, but I just want to make sure if anyone's listening.
It's a very small expense, it's just the concept of, of the town paying to pick up dog poop.
It's not so much paying, it's, it's actually not paying to pick it up, it's trash receptacles for an area that didn't have trash receptacles, and I can guarantee you, if you walked up there tomorrow, you'd find a Starbucks cup, a Dunkin' Donuts cup, an old newspaper, and other things. So, there's people going up there and finding those trash receptacles are rather handy.
And the trash receptacles have to get emptied.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll tell you what, I will officially no longer pay towards schools, if I can contribute to that. I, I guarantee you, we'll get a wave of people that'll say, let's start looking at what we use and don't use, and I win on that one, if I don't contribute to the schools anymore, or never putting a kid through it. I mean, I see, we, we are a community, we support, we support the big, the expensive and the not expensive.
I would point out that if Trinity at some point in the next foreseeable future buys the property, this becomes a moot point, at least at the state hospital, there's a lot of places that people walk dogs, and I don't think we want to take responsibility for putting trash receptacles, but if you have a place, you know, I think we have trash receptacles at Baxter Park, you know, there's places where, you know, people use, so, but this particular issue goes away.
Well, I think they have them out in the field a little bit, so I think, I think we're still going to have them out, someone on the north field, there's a couple of, but not the, we're only off fifteen.
Yeah, well, then I go more, I actually go more in the direction where Pete's going around, having some form of fee, but as much as anything, it's so we don't have the hospital become the, the most popular dog walking place in eastern Massachusetts, because part of our problem is that we've left such, it's such an open loop thing, but.
Well, that's what the dog control bylaw committee is looking at now, what's, what's the fee structure, right, so then, then to be up there, if you are paying two hundred and fifty dollars to be a professional, I'm just throwing a number out there, you know, that, that money then starts going towards things, and we'd be paying for those type of fees.
Yeah.
So, Jill just did comment that the next steps for the committee will be to look at a medallion program and take the next step.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Jill.
All right, and then, and nothing else on dog control, we're good? Do you want the next one?
I think if there's nothing else that the committee's looking at, yeah.
Jill, we can go offline if you want to track me down tomorrow. And then, capital budget committee appointments?
So, I just wanted to, it was brought to my attention earlier this year, that when, when we created the capital budget committee in twenty eighteen, there was supposed to be a select board representative on the committee, which was Selectman Mike Markucci at the time. When he stepped down, and Eileen won election, we did not put a, a select board member on that. So, I would like to, at a minimum tonight, I think that you need to appoint a select board member to that, we're in our, we're heading towards our second meeting, so I don't think it's too late for you to, to join and, and find out what we're doing. But I would also like you to consider reviewing the capital budget committee charter, when you're reviewing the Medfield financial policies that Steve has sent to you, and we'll take those up in October, but I would really recommend that Michael LaFrancesca, myself, and Andrew Foster be made ex officio members of the committee. It doesn't seem appropriate for us to be presenting ideas to the committee and then voting on them, and also voting on my staff members' projects, and Michael and I together, it just seems, of all committees, it seems that's the one we should definitely be ex officio on. I've also received a resume from somebody who's interested in being on the capital budget committee, so there's definitely some interest in there, so I think removing the three of us, you have some people ready to step on there. I don't think you can do that at this point, where we're the, in the first meeting, you know, going into our second meeting, but I think for next year, this needs to be done, so it needs to be done prior to town meeting, so, that's all.
Christine, on the, on the capital budget, in light of the discussion we had with Penny, so the facilities manager is on the capital committee, which makes sense.
Well, they used to be, and then they were asked to be taken off, and the committee kind of agreed informally that the facilities manager did not need to be on there. They felt so extremely uncomfortable voting on the projects that they did not participate in coming to the committee meetings. So, there was, and then we had a gap in facilities managers, and that's, yeah.
Where I was going with that, on the assumption that the facilities manager would be the best person to figure out what should be funded on the facilities area, was whether, I was actually looking for, should there be, I don't know that we have this person unless it's D P W director, should we have somebody on the vehicle side, which is also a major capital expenditure category, in light of this, you know, the policy we just talked about with Penny, suddenly, there's, there's some considerations there around what does, what gets passed, what gets recycled to some other department, what are we buying, how are we buying it, what does it cost, it's just a thought.
So, we tend to take those questions and use, vet those through Susan McPhee, who manages the Green Communities Program for us, as well as Jim Redden. So, those, those committees kind, those questions kind of go to the Medfield Energy Committee before they go to the capital budget committee. We were comfortable not having the facilities manager participate, because they're developing the projects, and then asking the committee to determine what's best, and they, they commit to make their presentation to the committee every year.
So, who's, so who is it that actually determines which facilities, projects have top priority?
So, the facilities manager makes a recommendation.
Okay, so it shows up as a recommendation, okay. All right, yep, got it.
Yep, and they put together the five-year plan, as you know, we're in the process of doing the twenty-year plan, and then they come up with the five-year plan as we do that, and the permanent planning and building committee is involved in the twenty-year plan as to what we need to move forward. But I just think you should, we need to look at the makeup, it hasn't been looked at since twenty eighteen, we've made some changes in our processes since then, so I just think it's, it's important for you to look at, so. But a minimum, I would at least like to put a select board member on, there was a member of the community who was very concerned that there was not representation from the board on there, so I think it's appropriate.
We'll do it tonight?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're all looking at you.
I mean, I don't mind being on.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Pete, you want to be on it, you want me to be on?
No, I don't want to be on it. No, I think it's more appropriate that the chair be on it.
No, that's fine.
All right.
And what's the chair on?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
When you gain the experience.
So, wait, so, so does it rotate with the chair, is that what I'm hearing you say?
I think that makes sense.
I don't think I'd do that, I think it's an advantage to have, if you're, I'm not looking for additional duties on top of areas, so I'm not, I can do it, but I wouldn't.
Because he said the chair, so I'm like, I'm going to chair for now, and then.
I think there's value to continuity around the strategy, so I would say, once we put somebody on, that's good, if you're willing and interested in doing it, I'm happy to support that.
I do, you do have a comment, Chris would like to be promoted, so I'm going to promote her as panelist.
Yep.
Where'd that come from?
I missed that, how did I?
I don't see it.
Oh, it's not a comment, she just raised her hand to be able to speak.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. You warned me, Chris, and I still wasn't looking.
I usually look for the red little circle there.
Um, just, just, I just want to, there's a question to get some clarification. Christine, you mentioned that the, the draft policy would be, is it going to be discussed by the select board in October?
I believe we are October fifteenth, yeah.
Okay, so it's not going to be, it's not like it's just going to be reviewed and then shot back to the warrant committee, it's actually going to be discussed?
Yes, Steve Callahan from the warrant committee is coming in to make a presentation to the select board, discuss the changes that were made in the policy, we'll seek their information input, and then it'll go back to the warrant committee again, so it'll be a couple iterations.
And I've asked for, I've asked to get a redlined copy, so that we can see what changes are made.
The only thing, the only thing I just wanted to, to mention is that when I looked at the, the capital budget committee charter from two thousand and eighteen, and then also, and looked at the policy, there's a little bit of inconsistency, which, which it sounds like you're aware of, in terms of the role of school committee. In the charter, it basically talks about, it'll be reviewed by school committee, but then the policy actually leaves out school committee in that very first paragraph. So, it seems like both select board and school committee should be part of the review process, since they both have statutory authority to approve their own bucket of, of costs. And that was the only thing that jumped out at me, and I just figured I would flag it, because I wasn't really sure what the context was tonight about the appointment discussion, but I just thought I would mention that as you guys were reviewing the policies for the next discussion.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, do we need to vote on putting you on there?
Yes.
Yeah. I move that we appoint Eileen to the capital budgeting committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I could say nay, but I wouldn't do that. All right. Citizens comment?
I have no one registered for citizens comment, and I think we're good tonight.
We flushed out a lot of conversations this evening. All right, so we're going to jump to the consent agenda. Request for a block party permit for September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, between three and six P M. at the corner of Countryway and Wood End. Request for a block party permit for September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, between five and ten P M. road closure, summer green to summer pine. Request for Medfield T V to place sandwich boards at the usual locations to promote their Scarecrow Spoutacular from Saturday, September twenty-eighth through October nineteenth. Request for Belforge and Medfield together to place sandwich boards at the intersection of North and Main Street from September twenty-eighth to October thirteen.
What's the event, Gene?
That's your boss?
Okay.
And that'd be that.
Ready? I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting minutes, I have approved both, although I didn't, I don't think I sent you the email today.
The venue there, I missed that, sorry. Would have been helpful.
Don't worry, Brittany's back in eleven weeks.
Could be an insurrection, though.
All right, so meeting minutes, April second, April ninth, Frank, I meant to send you, I did approve the ninth this afternoon, I wrapped that all up, so you get the, the second, ninth, like minor edits, nothing crazy.
Right, but I'll, I'll make the observation that when I changed, for some reason, when I made, they were really minor edits, so in cons, spelled my name wrong in one place, and it was one wrong word, but it didn't reflect it as an edit, it just changed it.
I noticed that, the same thing, yeah.
And so, something about the file.
We'll fix it.
So, fortunately, it was non-contraditional minutes, but I have no idea whether the three of us all saw the same, same thing.
So, yeah, so the, so the.
You should deflect that setting off.
The second, I saw with red, so you, you got in and you updated the comments.
You summed it, you summed?
On the first one, the second, and you made, I think it was during the Kingsbury comments, you might have inserted something, it was either that or, but the next one, I could see myself signed in, but I couldn't see any changes, and I didn't see any changes from you, and Pete, are we going to see changes from you?
Yeah, yeah, Mark says I can do it, I haven't looked at these ones yet.
Yeah, okay, so we can't.
I thought you did the second and the ninth last meeting, and I'm going to hold it up.
No, these were new, these came from Frank.
No, but they were on the, the second was on the last one, I didn't prove that one last time, it was on our last, last week.
I, I'm not clear on what dates I've seen, and I haven't seen, I just, you know, whatever I get them, I know that Brittany sent out a couple, I think it was.
So, these, but Frank sent, Frank sent these out, and you did do it a little differently And you did do it a little differently than, Brittany, she sends out an email, and there's just a direct link that goes to it. You sent a Google Doc.
Yeah, no, I haven't looked at yours yet.
So maybe I can reshare them via the way that you just described, Gus, and maybe that.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. If they come in as Google Doc, you just click on it, it pops up. But the only thing was that when I made the changes, it was just a straight change, like a Word document.
But only on the 9th, not the 2nd. The 2nd, I could see your changes.
I couldn't see my changes. That's the weird thing. That's very weird.
Yeah, I could see you got in and you put it in red.
I even, I even wasn't anonymous this time. I actually.
We're thriving without her. This is great. You did a great job.
Brittany, turn the zoom off. We're fine.
We're fine. There's no problem here.
All right, so they're deferred.
Right.
Okay.
Hearing that, you guys were ready to approve those from last week.
I was, but.
All right, so town administrator updates.
See, the town administrator update in front of you, I actually forgot to give you the calendar. Just see how that.
Is this calendar?
I did give you. Those are the early voting dates. I just wanted to bring those to your attention. And early voting is here at the townhouse. We ask that you park in the rear and just use the, the rear elevator to come up to the second floor. There's quite a few updates. You know, our new policy and procedure of having a written town administrator report. There's quite a few things in here. I'm not going to go over all of them, but I would like to just call out a few. Carrie mentioned tonight that we have been able, we've been notified by the Commonwealth that they are going to provide us with free COVID-19 tests to give out to people. They will not be available at the town hall. They're going to be available at events. We don't want people who are not feeling well to come to the town hall. So we're going to give those out in advance, so you should just have them at home and be able to test at home, so.
So when you say in advance, like how do you get them then?
We're going to give them out, they're supposed to be here in time for Medfield Day, so we will be giving them out at Medfield Day. But the concern is people coming into the town hall sick, and I did test negative for COVID. I don't, I just have a cold. We don't want people coming into the town hall who are not feeling well and expose the people who work here. So we'll, we'll do special events and, and give them out. I wouldn't be surprised if I sat out on the front lawn and gave them out. That's, you know, what we did during COVID, so. They have been, they have been holding off giving us any of the tests, and they just notified us this week. And Carrie was kind enough to take care of it for me, so. We at the townhouse are going to work in collaboration with T-SARC and Sustainable Medfield, and we are going to participate here in the Black Earth Composting Program. We don't have a ton of food waste at the town hall, but we do have some. So if we're trying to get some, some PR, get some people interested in the, in the project, we thought we should lead by example, and we're going to do it here at the town hall, so.
You probably have a couple animal carcasses here.
Well.
You don't put meat in, you don't put meat in compost.
How about bones or bees? Grasshoppers?
Her.
Yeah. It's been a summer. It's been a summer.
What breed?
The Board of Water and Sewerage had a public hearing last night. They voted a 5% increase in water rates and a 4% increase to the sewer rates.
Was there, was there much public comment? I couldn't.
No, I believe Frank covered the meeting last night. There was no comment. I give you the town clerk election dates, which are important for early voting. Just wanted to give you an update on, on council on aging. Ben, who is our project manager in the facilities department, has been working closely with Beta Engineering and the Council on Aging Board to develop some conceptual designs of where the Council on Aging garage will go. They've narrowed that down to four locations. Council on Aging has weighed in where they think is most appropriate. We've been working directly with the Chair of the Permit Planning and Building Committee. The next step will be to bring those conceptual designs to you. They'll be presented formally to the Permit Planning and Building Committee, and we'll start developing bids for construction of the garage. I think that's about it for big ones. Oh, I just wanted to just talk briefly, just thank everyone for coming to the Hinkley Playground grand opening on Sunday. It was such a huge success, so thank you to the Hinkley Helpers, Parks and Recreation, the Select Board, our delegation, and Public Safety. It was just so nice to have such a large event, and the weather and the flyover was all just perfect, so.
The Hinkleys were there.
That was the nicest, and I actually, I should, I don't have it to read to you. I received a text message from them the next morning that it made their whole year, and it was just a tremendous event. And I think I left at 2:00, and they were still there.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Yeah, so they, they really enjoyed the invitation and being a part of the whole day, so. And there's some great pictures. Hopefully you all got them, of them, so. That was fantastic. And then the other thing I want to let you know is VHB has started working on the conceptual designs for the intersections. So they'll be providing three options for Harding and North, two options for Harding and West, and two options for Harding and Hospital. And we anticipate we should have those in mid-October. If we can't do them for the October 15th meeting, we'll do them the first meeting in November.
Okay.
All right.
And that's it. And these will all be posted to the website for view as well.
Great. All right, next meeting dates, we've got, so you are not here for the next one, October 1st.
I won't be here, actually.
You'll be on vacay. God bless you.
Yep.
And then you're back for the October 15th.
Mm-hmm.
And then no meeting, but we will call out November 5th is the presidential election, which is what we were referencing in the early voting map. November 12th and November 19th are November dates, and December 3rd and December 17th are December dates. Select Board Member reports. Pete?
Chris, I'd just start by thanking you for the town administrator report. Appreciate getting those. Thank you. I think that's a great idea that you're doing those.
Thank you.
The only thing that I really had to report on was the Energy Committee meeting. And what fascinated me was that we went through these energy audits of all the buildings that the town owns and with suggestions for energy conservation measures, E C Ms, maybe?
E C Ms.
Yeah, I, I don't know the acronyms as well as the other people on the Energy Committee, because I, it's not my area. But what impressed me was that there really weren't all that many that had rates of returns that made sense. I don't know if you guys looked at that, but, and what also amazed me was that the Dale Street School ranked pretty well, and the FAF building ranked pretty well. And the, and the Wheelock School actually was an energy star school despite being from the 70s. I was, so I was quite shocked by those. The Energy Committee is going to, Sustainable Medfield has this, what do they call it? It's the, the topic of the quarter. That's not what they call it, but, let's see, action of the quarter. That's what they call it, I think. And the Energy Committee has agreed to, to deal, to be the catalyst for that for the last quarter of the year. And they, and the issue that the Energy Committee wants to focus on is the new specialized code, which is really, it's, it's the new version of the building code, and it really only applies for new construction. But it's, and it's geared towards energy things. And then the last thing I'll just mention is that my town administrator told me to stay off the zip line at the playground opening, but I couldn't help myself.
All right, Gus?
It's only been a week. I just can't get that much mischief in just one week, so. Yeah, I thought the, the Hinkley Playground grand opening was, was great. For me, that, that whole thing, the idea that some folks here in town could just get together the way that the Hinkley Helpers did and drive this thing to, you know, yeah. Weirdly, it helped to have ARPA funding, but, you know, to be able to pull that together and to come up with something that was as spectacular as what's there. We were lucky, I guess, on the weather and the flyby, but the whole, the whole thing just, every once in a while, something goes right, and it's just a nice thing in town. That's what that was, so appreciate that. And then outside of that, tomorrow night is the Norfolk County Advisory Board meeting, so we hadn't had one in a few months. Looks like mostly budget stuff, not too much, not too much else, but that should be it, and not much else to report besides that.
Well, I too was at the Hinkley Helpers event. The one thing I've said many times, the whole idea that this is just volunteers, like three young women. I mean, to me, even their age matters. Like, they are new residents in town with little kids, and they saw a need, and they stepped up in such a big way and rallied their family and their friends to, to get behind them. It's monumental task, and it was, it's phenomenal how it's turned out. But I've said this many times, without volunteers, this town doesn't happen, right? You, you can only have so many town employees, but you need volunteers to step up for all these different things. And the fact that they did is outstanding, so kudos to them.
And Ashley Laduka's gone on to the Warren Committee now.
Yeah, I love that.
Yes, and Kelly and Adrian, I'm coming for you.
And then the other thing I wanted to comment on, I didn't say it last week, and I meant to, was I got an email, and I think we all did, from a gentleman that had some concerns about what's going on at the transfer station these days with the swap. I don't know what it is this summer, but it has drawn so many more people. And it's a blessing and a curse, because the gentleman brought up in his email the concern of people cutting across. Like, in the old days, you never had people park where you toss your trash, like literally park and walk away. Like, you pull your car in, you throw your stuff, and you go, people are leaving their car there and then walking across. And there's, it's really getting dangerous, so I don't know if it's a discussion with, with the swap crew and Mo to be like, okay, do we need to start looking at where?
They're already doing that, yeah. They were, yeah, T-SARC had a conversation about it last week, and then they'll be planning their off-season, will be how to, how to better improve that.
Okay, yeah, but even, even now, there should be, you know, there's, how many more weekends until it shuts down? Does it shut down in October or September?
October, and it's September, right?
September, yeah.
Okay, so we might, we might have a week.
They only have one more weekend, I think.
Okay, all right, then we can focus on, yeah, because next year, we've got to break some of those bad habits. So someone's going to get hit. We don't want that. And then I will do a shout-out. We've got Medfield Day coming, right? Next, our next meeting will be post-Medfield Day. So I reached out to Carolyn Casey, who I keep in contact with, and she mentioned that the school building committee will have a booth there. They are absolutely talking up, you know, any feedback on location. They, they, they want everything they can, they can get. So we want to talk about that, and just talk about, like, you know, I know the policemen are going to be there with Nova, right? They'll show off our, our town dog.
I'm selling tickets in Kid Alley.
All right, so it's, you know, so just.
We're looking for a lot more volunteers. Russ did reach out to me a couple weeks ago and say that this is the lowest turnout they've had for volunteers. And I know it's still early, and people don't volunteer until they get closer to the event.
Always a problem when I ran it.
But he said this is, it's been really bad, so we signed up for a couple of shifts and trying to recruit some people around the town hall. But if anybody's listening and is interested, please reach out to Russ and, and volunteer even for an hour or two.
And when you say volunteer, give people an idea of what he's looking for people to do.
Mainly be in Kid Alley and sell tickets for the Kid Rides.
I didn't know if swap out recycling bags.
No, that's, no, that's, yeah, selling, selling train tickets.
All right, fair enough. And other than that, again, I do want to thank, I couldn't do it last week, I was still a little too emotional, but I appreciate the support from the town with everything I went through with my mom. You know, people drove down, people sent cards or flowers, just, you know, thank you so, so much. So, bottom of my heart, appreciate that, and.
Let's see, we still doing executive session?
So we.
You're going to, you're going to vote to go into executive session, so, you know, vote to go into executive session. The purposes are listed, and then you're not going to resume an open session.
And don't forget to make the declaration that in both cases, that an open meeting would have a prejudicial effect on the position of the town.
All right, I don't, did I get that script?
There's no scripts.
Nope, nope.
I think it's, I think it's just, you declare that, and then I move that.
All right.
Take care, Bill.
All right, thank you, Bill.
I'm walking to the elevator. I have a question for you.
Yes.
I declare we need to go into executive session.
So I declare we're going into executive session. Whoops, to discuss and consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. Holding it in public would be detrimental to.
Negotiate, well, the.
Negotiating powers of the town.
Right.
We will not reconvene.
We will not reopen the, our meeting at the close of our executive session.
I move that we go into executive session. The Chair has determined that the holding an open session would be detrimental to the interests of the town. Purpose of the executive session is to discuss and consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. The Select Board will not reconvene in open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Better than.
All right. Roll call, roll call.
Oh, roll call. I was going to do that. Okay, so roll call.
Roll call.